Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council joint hearing for the Committees on Health, Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction, Hospitals and Education. At this time, we ask you to silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, do not approach today's. We thank you for your kind cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Good afternoon. I am Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, Chair of Hospitals Committee. Thank you to Chair Schulman, Chair Lee, Chair Joseph for joining me today for our oversight hearing on school-based health and mental health centers. Providing convenient, high-quality health and mental health care to our city's youth is a collaboration's effort, and we are glad to have the opportunity to work with the Committees on Health, Education, and Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction on this hearing to ensure that vital care is being administered effectively. School-based health centers are medical health centers that offer a wide variety or array of free medical services to students regardless of their insurance coverage or immigration status. In addition to being located conveniently at their schools, the centers provide primary and preventive health care to patients, including first-aid care, screenings, and vaccination for various medical conditions, physical examinations, medication prescriptions, drug counseling, age-appropriate reproductive health services, health education, and in some cases even dental care. The health centers also offer mental health supports, including crisis intervention services, which often coincide with the services being offered at school-based mental health clinics. The mental health clinics at schools offer therapy, psychiatric assessment, and case management services. According to the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, New York City boasts about 138 clinics like this spread across 334 public schools, serving 150,000 students. While these numbers may seem substantial at first glance, they underscore a sobering reality. Over 41% of our schools either lack access to this vital health care hubs, or share one center among multiple schools co-located in the same building. And I have to say, traditionally, those schools are underserved communities where you see them the most. Additionally, they are available at SBMHS, offering onsite mental health services is even more scarce, exacerbating the challenges faced by our students in accessing crucial mental health support. And we all know it's very important, especially post-COVID height of the pandemic, because we still have cases of COVID going around. Moreover, the current system, bureaucratically, hurdles pose of formidable barriers to students seeking primary care. The prerequisite of enrolling students in their schools, SBHSCs, before they can access basic health care is unnecessary impediment, placing undue strain on families and further delaying essential medical attention. Providing comprehensive health care is a necessity, more than ever, and mental health supports. We have seen it on our streets, we have seen it on our subway station, we have seen it all over where young folks are walking, talking to themselves. It is sad for me as a nursing, the need is most importantly important, more than ever in our community. Will only serve to improve student, those are the reason, well-being of our children, our youth, their education, and their futures. Practically, those futures are in our hands. We are dedicated to delivering access to health care resources at school, and we look forward to learning about the administration of the school-based health and mental health options, including what works, what doesn't work, and what should be expended for utilization by other students across our city. These are our responsibility. With that, I would now turn to Chair Joseph, or before I do so, I would like to turn to Chair Joseph. Before that, I want to say thank you to all of you for being here, because with your help, we'll address the inequity that we need to address in New York City. So, thank you. Now, I will turn it over to my colleague Chair Joseph.
Thank you, Chair Narcisse. I'd like to recognize Chair Narcisse, Schulman, Lee, Menon, Lewis, Juang, Mar Morado, I'm gonna get it, Felice, Hanks, Public Advocate Mealy, and Palladino, Palladino, and Gennaro on Zoom. Before I continue, I'd like to recognize CUNY Law students that are here present with Ben Max today, and the students from LTW ICU, I see you. Thank you, Chair Narcisse, and thank you for inviting the Committee on Education to join the Committees on Hospital Health and Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction for this very important hearing. I'm Rita Joseph, Chair of the Education Committee. Thank you to everyone who's planning to testify today. I'm very much looking forward to hearing your testimony. School-based mental health centers, school-based mental health clinics are a critical role in increasing access to quality, comprehensive, coordinated primary care for children and adolescents, especially in underserved communities located onsite in schools. They reduce financial, geographic, and transportation barriers to health care. As a result, these health centers and mental health clinics are powerful tools in advancing health equity. Moreover, studies have shown that health centers and mental health clinics increase adolescents' use of health care. Many teenagers are reluctant to seek health care in a traditional medical setting, especially if it's related to sexual and reproductive health, substance abuse, and mental health concern, for a number of reasons such as cost and confidentiality. Increasing and improving access to medical, mental, behavioral, dental, and vision care to students maximize their opportunity to learn and grow. Health centers and mental health clinics also promote a culture of health across the school community and coordination across relevant systems of care. Moreover, at past Education Committee hearings, including last month's hearing on the preliminary budget, students themselves have testified to the importance of access to mental health services in our city post-pandemic. It is therefore concerning to hear reports of closures rather than opening of these health centers and mental health clinics, and it is especially concerning that it appears that these closures are happening with little to no input from the school communities that they want served. At this hearing, I'm interested in gathering data, data related to how many of these health centers and mental health clinics exist, who are they serving, and how are they being served. I'm also interested in understanding decisions to close such health centers and mental health clinics, including what data was taken into account, and what of any mitigation efforts were undertaken, and were representatives made aware. Lastly, I'm interested in learning how students and their families were made aware of these vital services and any plans to expand across the five boroughs. Thank you to the committee staff, as well as my own staff, for all of the work they put into today's hearing. I also would like to recognize Councilmember Hanif and Moya on Zoom. I'll now turn it over to Chair Schulman.
Thank you, Chair Joseph. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Lynn Schulman, Chair of the New York City Council's Committee on Health. I want to thank Chairs Narcisse, Joseph, and Lee for holding this important hearing with us today on school-based health centers and mental health clinics. In addition to discussing school-based health centers and their critical importance as sources of health care for many students in New York City public schools, especially those who lack access to primary care, today's hearing is an opportunity to gain a better understanding of DOHMH's role in overseeing and managing these centers. It is also an opportunity to examine the state of pediatric health across New York City and how school-based health centers are a critical component in establishing from an early age good habits and routines in visiting with health care providers and maintaining a healthy lifestyle. Earlier this year, the Council enacted my legislation to require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to develop Healthy NYC, a five-year population health agenda for the purpose of improving public health outcomes, addressing health disparities, and improving quality of and access to health care for New Yorkers to increase their life expectancy and improve health. According to DOHMH, life expectancy in New York City has dropped dramatically from 82.6 years in 2019 to 78 years in 2020. This represents the biggest and fastest drop of lifespan in a century. The largest decreases in life expectancy were among Black and Latino New Yorkers. For Black New Yorkers, the pandemic worsened existing disparities. Through Healthy NYC, DOHMH seeks to increase life expectancy by 2030, reduce health disparities, lower the number of cancer, heart disease, and diabetes-related deaths, reduce added sugar and salt in our food supply, and increase access to health care and coverage, among other goals. As DOHMH works to achieve these goals, it must work in deep partnership with H&amp;H, our city's hospitals and health care providers, and the Department of Education to ensure that our children are given the best possible opportunity to live long and healthy lives. Realizing these goals will require that we address environmental health hazards like PM 2.5, tobacco smoke, and lead, that we improve access to high-quality and healthy foods in low-income neighborhoods, and that we expand access to peer supports and resources to reduce the likelihood of developing type 2 diabetes and heart disease. The rate of type 2 diabetes is at crisis levels in New York City, and is well past time that we act to eliminate the root causes of type 2 diabetes in our communities. We must also invest in our communities and work to reduce the prevalence of childhood asthma and CLRD in our city, especially in areas like Mott Haven and the Bronx. School-based health clinics in our public schools can and should be a strong partner in eliminating health disparities, educating our children on how to care for themselves and when to see a health care provider, educating parents and caregivers on healthy eating habits, and providing access to healthy lunches and snacks to students. I want to highlight the newly-released Citywide Diabetes Reduction Plan published by DOHMH pursuant to my legislation that the Council enacted last year. I am excited today to discuss this plan and how DOHMH considers school-based health clinics and our public schools as part of the equation in reducing the incidence of type 2 diabetes in our city by 5% by 2030. The fight for longer lives begins at birth. As a breast cancer survivor and as Chair of the Committee on Health, I am committed to ensuring that everyone in New York City has access to high-quality health care regardless of their zip code or financial status. I believe that health care is a human right. Social, environmental, and economic burdens contribute to the wide gaps in health outcomes for children across the city, particularly for children of color and in low-income communities. Eliminating health disparities requires a comprehensive approach and critical investments in public health. I look forward to a continued partnership between this Council and the administration to realize the vision of a healthier New York City. I am hopeful that today's hearing will generate new ideas for collaboration among city agencies to promote healthier and happier lives for our children. In closing, I would like to thank the representatives from the administration for being here today and testifying, as well as my staff, Chief of Staff Jonathan Boucher, Legislative Director Kevin Macalay, Legislative Fellow Andrew Davis, and Communications Director Jessica Siles, and the Health Committee staff, Christopher Pepe, Sarah Sutra, and Manuah Butt, for their work on this hearing. I will now turn it over to Chair Lee for her opening remarks.
Good afternoon. Oh. Is that working? Hello? Okay, you guys can hear me. All right. Don't worry, I'm the last chair to go. So, I'll get this moving along. Good afternoon. My name is Linda Lee, Chair of the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction, and I would like to begin by thanking my colleagues, of course, Chair Narcisse, Chair Schulman, Chair Joseph, and everyone else who's joined us today for this important oversight hearing. Among the two pieces of legislation we're also hearing today, I'm proud to be a sponsor of Chair Joseph's Resolution 13, which would designate the second Friday in March as Social and Emotional Learning Day to recognize the importance of ensuring that New York City public school students acquire the social-emotional competencies that they need to succeed in life. So, according to NAMI, which is the National Alliance on Mental Illness, 1 in 6, 1 in 6, young people between the ages of 6 and 17 experience a mental health disorder each year, with half of all conditions beginning by age 14. Undiagnosed, untreated, or inadequately-treated mental health conditions can significantly interfere with a student's ability to learn, grow, and develop. Since children, as we all know, spend so much of their productive time in educational settings, schools offer a unique opportunity for early identification, prevention, and interventions that serve students where they already are. Thus, the value of school-based health centers that offer mental health services and school-based mental health clinics cannot be overstated, because we all know that our kids spend so much time in the school building. By removing barriers such as transportation, scheduling conflicts, and stigma, school-based mental health services can help students access vital supports. In her State of the State speech in January, Governor Hochul highlighted school-based services as a key aspect of her mental health approach, and claimed that every school that wants a mental health clinic will get one. Now, listen to the next sentence. She has allocated $20 million for schools to open satellite mental health clinics. So, yes, we're thankful, but if we had all schools that wanted mental health clinics, we know that we're going to need a lot more investments than $20 million. So, I just wanted to say that. So, we are concerned about the shortfalls of the funding and how this is all going to get funded. While the investment will provide $25,000 in startup funds for providers to start satellite clinics to schools, which, by the way, I will say, an average salary of a mental health social worker starting out from grad school is about maybe 55, 60. So, we're talking about $25,000 in starting funds, right? This number pales in comparison to what is actually necessary to construct, develop, hire, and run these clinics in an impactful way. The health and well-being of our youth cannot be understated. Early identification and effective treatment for children and their families can make a huge difference in the lives of those with mental health conditions, and we must take steps that enable all schools to increase access to appropriate mental health services. So, today, we look forward to hearing from the administration and members of the public and other interested stakeholders who have taken the time to come and join us today. So, we thank you all for being here. And I'd like to thank my staff, as well as our committee staff members who've worked so hard to prepare this hearing. And finally, I'd like to thank the Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction Committee staff. We have our Legislative Council Sarah Sutra, Senior Legislative Policy Analyst Kristi Dwyer, Rose Martinez, Assistant Deputy Director of Data Operations, and Daniel Glantz, who's sitting back over here, our Financial Analyst, sorry, all who have amazing, great lived experience and professional experience as well. I just wanted to add that. And I also wanted to recognize, we've also been joined by Councilmember Botcher, as well as Councilmember Ariola. Oh, yes. And I will now turn it over to the Public Advocate. I always get to introduce you, Public Advocate, at these hearings. So, I will now turn it over to the Public Advocate to make his statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know everyone was praying for at least one more opening.
One second. I think some of the Councilmembers are here that we did not acknowledge. Mealy and Kaban is here. Thank you.
Thank you.
To distract you.
I was just saying, I know everyone was praying for one more opening, and I'm happy to answer your prayers right now. Good afternoon. Peace and blessings, love and light to everybody. My name is Jomani Williams, and I'm the Public Advocate of the City of New York. I want to thank the chairs and the members of Committees on Health, Hospitals, Education, and Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction for holding this hearing today and allowing me the opportunity to testify and to congratulate you all. As I'm sure you're aware, and I'm sure it's a pure coincidence, the mayor announced right when we were starting that we were opening 16 mental health clinics in New York City public schools. I'm sure it's a pure coincidence that he announced it at the same time, but congratulations. Exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic, students continue to experience high level of stress and trauma. Factors compounded by the sudden loss of routine, the gradual return to in-person learning, and socially-emotional and behavioral setbacks. As we know, many students rely on schools for educational and behavioral services, and for some students, school is their only reliable source of food and health care. Too often, however, students feel unsafe and unsupported in schools. Reliance on policing models for school safety perpetuates a cycle of violence, victimization, and exclusion feeding the school-to-prison pipeline. This cost for infrastructure disproportionately impacts students of more color, as studies have linked youth violence to poverty, neglect, violence in the community, distrust between students and school staff, trauma-victimization of students by educators often in the name of discipline, and a lack of student support in extracurricular activities. Black students represent 49% of all school-based NYPD interventions, even though Black young people make up only 26% of the student population. We must move away from this kind of model and instead adopt a healing-centered approach to ensure all students, staff, and families are and feel safe, supported, and seen. I want to point out that the cost for solutions have been around for decades in some of the same schools and the same neighborhoods. If that was a solution, it probably would have worked by now. Public schools are the main youth mental health system in our city, and an audit published last year by the State Controller found that too many public schools are understaffed with mental health professionals, are not adequately-trained staff, and only a few have services readily available. It also showed that the DOA struggled to provide little oversight to ensure students receive the required mental health instructions critical to developing their awareness and resilience. Further, the majority of schools did not meet the recommended ratio of school counselors and social workers to students, and many schools lack a full-time school nurse. Advocates, students, families, and educators, and school staff have long pushed for a healing-centered framework in our city schools. A healing-centered approach to education recognizes that students are often sites of trauma for students, and takes affirmative steps to ensure that all staff, students, and families feel and are safe, supported, and seen. While there is some research on implementing healing-centered frameworks from 3K to 12, studies on healing-centered pedagogical programs such as restorative justice or mindfulness-based education underscore the necessity of healing-centered approaches. Mindfulness-based education and restorative justice are part of a broader shift in the field of education and centers the well-being of school communities. Restorative justice practices are associated with decreased violent or disruptive incidents, increased self-esteem, and pro-social behaviors, decreased rates of suspension and expulsion, and gains in attendance and credit accrual. Studies on mindfulness-based education have shown that improved working memory, attention, academic skills, social skills, emotional regulation, and self-esteem, as well as reported improvements in mood and decrease in anxiety, stress, and fatigue might port out across the nation. One of the biggest groups we've seen increase in violence is the young people, which is probably directly connected to the lack of support they're receiving in schools and other places. Our students need more support, yet despite this, the Adams Administration is proposing even further cuts of hundreds of millions of dollars from our public school budget. Addressing the mental health needs of young people is essential investment in the future of New York. With the influx of asylum-seeking students, New York City should be allocating more funding, not less, to support this vulnerable population. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all my colleagues, Chair Joseph, Chair Schulman, and Lee. Thank you, Public Advocate Jomani Williams. I would like to recognize that we have been joined by Councilmember Sanchez, and I hope I have everybody covered. Everybody covered. Felice? Felice was covered. Yeah, Felice. With that, I will now invite the administration to offer their testimony as soon as the Committee Council administers their oath. Thank you.
We will now hear testimony from the administration. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. This includes the folks who are here for Q&amp;A. I will read the affirmation once and then call on each of you individually to respond. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you.
All right. So, one second. Now, we have Dr. Leslie Hayes, Deputy Commissioner for Family and Child Health. We have Marnie Davidoff. Did I say it right? No?
Margie Davidoff, thank you.
Margie, okay, thank you. Sally Frank, thank you. Erica Smith. Lorraine Tietzey. Rebecca Safranas, I hope I said it right. Thank you. Gail Admin. Gillian Smith. Ted Long. And Jason Harrisman.
Ah, Hensman.
Hensman. Oh, sorry. It looks like R. Thank you. So, now, we're gonna start with Dr. Long. Dr. Hayes, sorry. Dr. Hayes, because I had Dr. Hayes first. So, you see, when you're friends, that's what happened. Dr. Hayes.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairs Schulman, Lee, Joseph, Narcisse, and members of the Committees. I am Dr. Leslie Hayes, Deputy Commissioner for the Division of Family and Child Health at the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, Health Department. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I am pleased to be here with my colleagues to discuss the Health Department's role in establishing, supporting, and overseeing school-based health centers and mental health clinics in New York City schools. Early in my career, I served as the Medical Director for a network of school-based health centers. I know these centers well and care deeply about their work. First, I want to explain the role of the Office of School Health before I move into the subject of our hearing today. The Office of School Health is a joint office between the New York City Health Department and New York City Public Schools. School Health works hard to promote the health of 1 million children in 2,000 public and non-public schools in New York City every day. Among other responsibilities, School Health supports school-based health centers and mental health clinics by providing training and onsite technical assistance for operations, management, billing, and implementation of best practices. School Health ensures adherence to policies including chronic illness care, communicable disease reporting, immunization compliance, and nursing coverage needs. School Health monitors all contracts and memorandums of understanding. They also liaise with all providers, the State Department of Health, State Office of Mental Health, and School Construction Authority on initiating and oversight of new and current clinics. Now, I will provide background on school-based health centers and mental health clinics. School-based health centers and mental health clinics are two distinct entities with different regulatory environments and operations. The Office of School Health provides programmatic oversight of both the school-based health centers and the mental health clinics. The State Department of Health and Office of Mental Health regulates the clinical standards and licensure of these entities. They represent a unique collaboration between health care providers, schools, and both state and city government to support the health of young people in high-need communities. Operations for these entities rely heavily on Medicaid reimbursement, as well as city tax levy, state funds, and philanthropic investments. School-based health centers were established in New York State's Public Health Law, Article 28, and are licensed by the State Department of Health. I will refer to these as Article 28 facilities moving forward. Article 28 facilities are located in school buildings and provide comprehensive medical care to students, including primary, preventive, acute, and chronic care. They also provide referrals as needed. Schools with Article 28 sites offer comprehensive services. They are staffed by a multidisciplinary team of medical providers, medical assistants, social workers, mental health providers, and nurses. Many include health educators, and some facilities have part-time dental care providers. Insurance is billed as appropriate, but students are guaranteed but students are guaranteed care with no out-of-pocket costs, regardless of their insurance status. There are currently one hundred and thirty-eight Article 28 facilities in New York City that serve over one hundred and fifty thousand students across three hundred and thirty-three public schools. Criteria for facility location prioritizes large schools with high Medicaid enrollment, high temporary housing status, high disease burden in the school community, and location in task force on racial inclusion and equity neighborhoods, known as Tree Neighborhoods. The majority of current locations are in Tree Neighborhoods. Article 28 facilities play an essential role in increasing healthcare access for school-aged youth, which improves health outcomes, quality of life, and health equity. They are particularly powerful tools for improving access to reproductive healthcare. Teens can access age-appropriate confidential sexual and reproductive health services, including onsite dispensation of contraceptives and HIV and STI screening and treatment. Furthermore, we have found that students follow up more consistently with Article 28 referrals than community referrals. And students with access to Article 28 facilities often have higher immunization rates than students who do not. So, these critical facilities face significant challenges in sustaining operations. We are all aware that the United States' healthcare system inherently poses barriers to providing care to those who need it most. In Article 28 facilities, we see many of the same struggles seen throughout the healthcare system. The financial sustainability for Article 28 facilities is tenuous because of high startup capital costs, recruitment challenges, low reimbursement rates, and pending Medicaid changes. Article 28 facilities are primarily funded through Medicaid, and we have serious concerns about the state's plan to transition all school-based health centers into Medicaid-managed care. This transition will mean losing millions in funding and significantly jeopardizing the future of Article 28 facilities. The Health Department, alongside advocates from across the state, have urged the state for years to permanently carve school-based health centers out of Medicaid-managed care. The governor has vetoed legislation that would accomplish this for the last three years. The state legislature continues to support school-based health centers and has introduced legislation for a permanent carve-out again this year. We urge the council to join us in advocating for the safeguard of these critical resources. I will now discuss school-based mental health clinics. These facilities were established in New York's Mental Health Hygiene Law, Article 31, and are licensed by the State Office of Mental Health. I will refer to these as Article 31 facilities moving forward. Article 31 facilities are standalone mental health clinics in schools that offer mental health and treatment services. While Article 28 clinics may offer health services, Article 31 clinics exclusively offer mental health care. All schools have mental health services in some capacity to support the emotional well-being of children and families. Article 31 clinics are part of this universe of resources and are most appropriate for certain communities. These clinics provide individual, family, and group therapies, crisis and psychiatric assessment, and twenty-four-hour crisis coverage for students. Article 31 clinics have highly-trained mental health providers that serve as a resource for school staff and families and supplement other New York City public school supportive services. They are designed to have capacity to serve all students in the building who need service, which allows for no wait lists. They are primarily funded through Medicaid reimbursement. There are two hundred and fifteen Article 31 clinics in New York City, serving over one hundred and ninety-one thousand students. Placement criteria prioritizes large schools with high Medicaid enrollment, high temporary housing status, high need based on social-emotional learning, school screening results, and lack of community-based mental health services. The majority are located in Tree Neighborhoods. These clinics fill critical gaps in mental health access. We find that students receive care faster at school-based clinics and follow up more consistently with referrals to Article 31 clinics in schools than comparable clinics in the community. Article 31 clinics require low capital costs to open, which is a major advantage. These are standalone mental health clinics and do not require construction or medical equipment. The city's portfolio of Article 31 clinics is expanding. Ten new clinics were approved to open this year, and nineteen new clinics are in the approval process right now, including the clinics in the Bronx and Brooklyn that were announced today. The city's mental health plan calls for opening more Article 31 clinics where they are needed, and the Health Department is working tirelessly to do so. We look forward to working with the council to continue this process. Progress, I'm sorry. We are excited by the governor's recent announcement to provide startup funding for new Article 31 mental health clinics. The Health Department is ready to, is already helping establish new clinics this year with this funding and look forward to the release of more funds. Furthermore, we are pleased that the state has recently increased Medicaid reimbursement rates for school-based Article 31 clinics. We are encouraged by growing state support for these critical facilities. Long-term sustainability is dependent on the state maintaining and growing these investments over time. I will speak to introduction three, four, one of 2024, which will require the Office of School Health to collect and report the number of students with known diagnoses of sickle cell disease or trait. The Health Department supports the intent of this legislation. However, we would like to work with the council regarding some of the technical challenges that we have identified. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I look forward to answering your questions.
I want to say thank you for your time and thank you for the testimony. Before I even get to any question, tell us a little bit about the release of the sixteen clinics. Chair, can you tell us a little bit about it? That just announced, the new announcement for today?
I don't have any information.
Oh, you don't have any information?
Uh, well, we can answer it from, from Health and Hospital. So, the sixteen new clinics are going to be in the South Bronx and Central Brooklyn as part of the, the mental health continuum. So, the funding, that was a joint priority by both city council and the administration, which includes these sixteen clinics and also the other schools that would be providing expedited referrals to our outpatient clinic. So, we're in the, the process of, of opening all sixteen with a couple that have already opened. I believe two of those sixteen have already opened as of yesterday and a couple weeks ago.
Are they providing comprehensive care or just for, just to address mental?
They're specifically those Article 31 school-based mental health satellite clinics.
That's all?
That is correct.
Okay. So, I want to say thank you for being here. But now, how many total school-based health centers are currently in operation? What services do these centers offers, offer? How many of these centers offer mental health services? How is the decision made to include mental health services in some of SBHCs and not others?
So, thank you for the question, Chair Narcisse. There are one hundred and thirty-eight school-based health centers serving one hundred and fifty thousand students in three hundred and thirty-three public schools currently. The services that the clinics provide vary. As mentioned in my testimony, we provide services that include physical exams, dental care, sports physicals, immunizations, mental health services, including treatment, health education, and age-appropriate reproductive health. The school-based health centers are responsible for providing mandated school health services. That's also including first aid and care for any acute illnesses, daily medication administration, and also treatment of chronic illnesses and management of chronic illnesses like asthma and diabetes, as well as emergency response, including administration of EpiPens and naloxone. And I mentioned that we also provide, you know, age-appropriate reproductive health services in the school-based clinics as well.
So, has the decision made to include mental health services in some of them and not others?
The school-based health centers provide some medical, mental health treatment. That is part of their service design. For school-based mental health clinics, they only do mental health treatment and assessments.
So, has the decision been made based on the area, based on the needs? How, I just want to know how that decision made, which, that made?
The decision to provide services depending on whether it's a school-based health center or a school-based mental health center is, is made in, in different ways. For the school-based health centers, the, the services can vary depending on the need of the school.
That's all.
And for school-based mental health services, those services are also assessed and can depend on what other services are already in the schools at the time.
Okay, give me, we have been joined by my colleague, CM Christian, Christian. According to political articles published last August, H and H announced a plan to close all eight of their school-based health centers on August thirty-first, 2023. Did that plan to close all the eight, eight health centers get approved by the State Department of Health? And where, where were those eight school-based health centers located?
Hi, this is Ted. I'd like to answer the question. So, first off, thank you for asking the question because it gives us an opportunity to explain several different things that we've done for this year at Health and Hospitals. I first wanted to premise by saying that at Health and Hospitals, we believe in and support school-based clinics. It is also our core mission to provide primary care to every child in New York City without exception. As many have said, the public advocate, Chair Lee and Chair Joseph, mental health is of critical importance to us. Also, Chair Narcisse, I wrote down one of the things you said. Comprehensive healthcare is a necessity. I would take it a step further to complement it by what Chair Schulman said, which is the, I, I believe comprehensive healthcare is a human right. So, what we've done this year, big picture, is we've increased the number of school-based clinics that we're going to be operating, and I'm going to turn to my colleague Jason to share a little bit more about that in a moment. We've increased the mental health services that we're providing directly onsite to schools, and we've increased the number of primary care visits and patients we can help at our clinics that exist today in New York City. But let me walk you through how closing eight of our school-based health clinics was a part of all of that. So, I believe the good care is the right care at the right place at the right time. As a practicing primary care doctor every week in the Bronx, I know what good care is for kids. It's good primary care, it's mental health care, it's vision care, it's dental care, and it's reproductive healthcare. And it's all of those things together. That's what comprehensive primary care or healthcare for kids is. Unfortunately, our eight small school-based health clinics never offered all of those services. And over time, students and family members began to vote with their feet. Over time, we began, we had the ability to help fewer and fewer students each year, such that last year, the statistic I'll give you is that the average number of visits, primary care visits, across our eight school-based health clinics was two per day. That's one student was, was seen for a primary care visit in the morning, and maybe one student that's seen for a primary care visit in the afternoon. Now, the problem with that is that for my other Gotham Health and New York City Health and Hospitals, hospital-based clinics, we have lines lining up for people wanting to come in and receive our excellent comprehensive healthcare. In fact, we now have a wait time of up to two weeks for students or children to be able to make a new patient appointment at one of our existing clinics, which offers those comprehensive services, everything I mentioned, plus many other things as well. So, we were faced with the situation where we had these eight school-based clinics that were providing two primary care visits on average per day, and we have our other fifty primary care clinics at our hospitals and Gotham Health sites that we had a wait time for kids to be able to get in and be seen. People were voting with their feet that that's where they wanted to receive their care. We have these clinics that I'm referencing here within approximately one mile of each of the eight schools. So, to put it another way, if you look at the number of visits or unique patients that we helped across our eight school-based health clinics last year, one of my pediatricians at one of my Gotham Health clinics could have seen all of those patients in one year. So, in a time when we have a national shortage of primary care doctors like myself and a national shortage of nurse practitioners, we're faced with the situation of people were voting with their feet wanting to come to our clinics, and we had teams that if we moved them from our school-based health clinics over to my other clinics, the same team could help five to ten times the number of students each day. Put another way, those same teams could give access to primary care to five to ten times the number of New York City children each day. And we know New York City children need access to primary care because there are so many that are trying to get into our clinics that there's a two-week wait time for new patients now. So, what we've done overall is we've taken the teams from those eight clinics, and I've repositioned them in my comprehensive primary care clinics where, again, they can now help five to ten times the number of students or children each day. And we've, in parallel with that, we are opening sixteen new school-based mental health clinics, which enables us overall to be able to provide more mental health in schools, which I believe is the right care and the right place for mental health, as was shared earlier by many of you as well. It enables us to help substantially more children in New York City to receive primary care, which is a limited commodity because there's a national shortage of doctors like me that are providing primary care to kids and adults each day. But it allows us to help five to ten times the number of kids each day in New York City. And going forward, I'll turn to my colleague Jason to share more about the mental health clinics. I don't want to speak for him, but I just wanted to provide the overall rationale that we wanted to increase mental health, providing it in the right place, and increase access to primary care for New York City students. That is their human right.
And I'll just add on the, on the school-based mental health clinics. Those sixteen are adding to an existing five clinics for New York City Health and Hospitals, I believe. One, actually, I know one is in Brooklyn, and then four are in Queens. So, we're adding, you know, even more and really doubling down on our investment within schools for the school-based mental health clinics.
Thank you. Well, I like to travel, not to the future, but let's take us to the back, right? To the past. What was, what was the reason that we're starting school-based clinics? And while we are that, what kind of outreach was being done within the school? Because we're dealing with some delicate population. Because we have a society where most young kids not used to going to the doctor. Like, in my situation, I would say not only mine is just so many others, but we don't even have a clinic, a Gotham clinic, don't even have any hospitals like mine. So, having the center within reach trying to promote the preventive care, wouldn't you say that is a good shot to have at least a center within the school, the high school, like, for our, our youth, our young folks?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start and then I'll.
And what kind of outreach have you done? Too, because they're not familiar with going to the doctor when they're teenagers. Because they're not familiar with going to the doctor when they're teenagers. And with the crisis we're going through, we need to kind of get them. So what have you done to get us to make sure they get to that door?
Yeah, great question. I'll talk a little bit about Health and Hospital's point of view with respect to outreach and access, and I'll turn to my colleagues at the Department of Health if you want to share more about the history of school-based clinics. And just to contextualize, I want to make the point again that we had eight school-based health clinics that are in discussion here, which were small clinics typically with one NP and one PCA in each of those clinics, compared to, again, our comprehensive primary care sites, which I would love for you to have one in Canarsie, which are able to provide the array of services that the kids need to be healthy. So in terms of what we did for outreach, outreach is really, really important in healthcare, and it's something I think is really undervalued. I'll give an example, and I'll answer more precisely for what we did in our schools. But when I think about the importance of outreach, I have a quick patient story. We started, and my team started the NYC Care Program back in 2019, and one of the things I learned from that is the importance of not just saying healthcare is a human right, but telling people that this is where they can safely come for care and giving, and making them feel that they can come, that there is access for them to come. My first NYC Care patient in the Bronx was a lady that hadn't seen a doctor in forty-three years. That day, she'd never had a mammogram, never had a Pap smear, didn't know if she had diabetes. What changed that day for her, because at the end of my visit with her, I asked her what was different about today, is she said, started crying, she said that she didn't feel she deserved care until she saw me that day, which broke my heart. But I think what we did differently that day for her was we did outreach to show her that we meant healthcare as a human right at Health and Hospitals. So outreach is very important to us. What we did at the eight schools here is we went to parent-teacher conferences, we handed out flyers, pamphlets, talked to parents. We handed out information not only about how to make an appointment at one of the more comprehensive Gotham or hospital-based ambulatory care sites that's nearby, and again, within approximately one mile of each of the schools, each of the eight schools, we have one of our clinics. But we also passed out brochures and flyers about express care, low-barrier ways to receive care. Express care is, we'll get cell phones here, a virtual care platform that you can, right now, have a healthcare visits with one of our excellent doctors, just from, from your phone with no barriers to, you know, again, regardless of insurance or immigration status. So that's what we did on the outreach side. On the access side, that, that's where we wanted to make sure that when we were making these changes and these shifts where we're doing more mental health today and more primary care, where people are voting with their feet they want to come to, repositioning these teams enabled us to, again, not only help students in schools that would be nearby, but just the raw numbers, to be able to help five to ten times the number of students. We're in the situation where we have, again, so many families calling for pediatrician appointments with us that we've developed a wait time of two weeks. I wish the wait time was zero days, but there's so many people voting with their feet that that's where they want to receive care, and there aren't enough primary care doctors across the country, let alone in New York City. By repositioning our clinical teams and telling the schools and the parents that this is what we're doing so that we could bring the students there, we're able to help substantially more kids, maybe up to ten times the number of kids.
Well, I appreciate everything you just said, but in our communities, some communities, underserved communities, we have most chronic illnesses, and our youth think that they don't have to go to the doctor. You just say the sorry yourself, a forty years old, and because in some of our communities, if you go to the doctor, you're not good enough, you're not healthy enough, you have that stigma attached to it. So I would like to see more ads and commercials being done to let our young men, Black and Latinos communities, which, as a nurse for so many years, for over, you know, three decades, being in the ER, doing home care, there is that kind of, if you go to the doctor, it's a wrong thing. So I want to see more of promotion around health, like where our youth can see it's okay to go to the doctor, and it's not only till, like, you're very ill, like, you're older and full of chronic diseases, that's not cost-effective at all if we focus on preventive care. So I would like to see the line in the clinics. I've been to a clinic where I see a few young folks coming, and the timing for classes, all those things, we have to work it out in order to get our kids to be compliant, it's okay to go to the doctor. Now I have to turn it to my colleagues because she has to run and she has to ask a few questions. So, but I'm coming back because there's a lot of things.
Just a quick, I can offer a quick, quick response to that. I just want to say I fully agree, one hundred percent. My conviction and my personal mission in life is to have every New Yorker and every child be able to name their primary care doctor. The only way we're going to do that is with outreach and with enough access. So I agree with every word you just said.
Thank you. I know you understand, you're a doctor, I'm a nurse. Thank you.
Would I be able to just add that with the closures of the H&amp;H clinics, the Health Department continues to tirelessly work to make sure we are providing quality health care in New York City public schools. We have opened, two of the clinics will be opening again, one in the fall and the other one in the spring, and we are placing nurses in the other locations as well. So our efforts to make sure that the services are given to our New York City public school students are what is paramount for us.
Thank you. Now my colleague Chair Schulman.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, yes, I want to, first, I want to recognize Councilmember Brooks Powers, who's here? Oh, and Councilmember Brewer, sorry. Thank you. First, I want to say our kids only get one chance at a good education, and you can't get a good education if you're not healthy. So let me, let me, let me preface it by saying that. So I want to ask, how important is childhood health to increasing life expectancy and improving health outcomes throughout a person's life? Anybody up for grabs?
So thank you for that question, Chair Schulman. As you said, it's important to be healthy. Life expectancy is also something that the Health Department is looking at and trying to increase over time. We know that when kids have a healthy start, their life is, is better, and their health outcomes are also much better. So the focus on having school-based health centers within the schools where students don't necessarily have to go outside of the school area, having school-based clinics that meet the high needs of communities that are highly burdened with diseases like asthma and diabetes are very important as well. So that is one of the focuses that we, we are working on.
What is the Office of School Health's role in the work of increasing life expectancy? And were they involved in shaping the goals laid out in the Healthy NYC Plan? And how will they be involved in executing the goals of the plan?
So the Office of School Health was definitely part of the development of the Healthy NYC Goals, and will continue to work to support the, the goals that we have available. You know, the chronic disease around diabetes and asthma, we have programs within the school-based health center that focus on asthma case management, working with the students themselves around proper administration of their asthma medications, working with parents to also educate them around the disease process and how to manage their children's illness is important. And we also have a very robust diabetes management program within the schools where the nurses work with the students and the parents and also with the providers. That is something that is really important, being able to work alongside community providers if that is something that a student has. And I, and I would say, as a former community provider myself, being an adolescent medicine specialist, having a school-based clinic and having a patient who is a student in an environment where there is a school-based clinic, and additionally having a chronic illness, being able to work and manage the illness of that particular student with the school-based clinic is very important, especially around the time, and for my age population, it was adolescents, where dealing with chronic illnesses are definitely debilitating even more for them and their self-esteem. Having the school environment working in concert with you in the community to support not only the student but the family is what is very important.
I, I want to, thank you. I want to make a suggestion, and I know DOE is not here, but I've been to the schools in my district, and I've actually met with the student councils, and I think if you sit down with them and talk to them about healthcare, because they've spoken to me, and they're very invested, and I think they can take that message because they're folks that are, you know, that are trusted by the rest of the student body, that they can help with, with a lot of that. So I just, oh, DOE is here, I'm sorry. That's right, DOE is here. It's been a day, folks, for all of us. No, so I just, so DOE, so I want to make that suggestion because these are amazing kids that can really go far, and I've been in trainings with them for a number of other things, not on this, on healthcare, but I just wanted to make that suggestion. So I want to ask just a couple more questions. Have rates of diabetes among children increased or decreased over the past five years? Whoever wants to answer.
I don't have that information with me, but I can get back to you on that.
Please. And then, if, if you're going to get, when you get back, get back to us, please add which neighborhoods, the demographics, that have experienced the most significant changes. How important is the availability of healthy food to a child's likelihood of developing type-two diabetes later in life?
The availability of, of healthy foods is, is very important to, to the management of, of their diabetes and also to the prevention of diabetes.
What work is DOHMH engaged in to improve the supply and availability of healthy foods in low-income neighborhoods?
I would have to get back to you on the details, but we have programs available where we do supply healthy foods in various neighborhoods.
Okay. The newly released Diabetes Reduction Plan cites a goal of reducing deaths due to diabetes by five percent by 2030. Is addressing childhood health disparities part of how DOHMH plans to achieve that goal?
Yes, it is.
What is DOHMH's role in engaging children and their families on ways to reduce their risk of developing type-two diabetes later in life? I mean, I think you addressed that a little bit in your earlier responses, but.
I did, Chair Schulman, but I would also add that the Health Department is not a clinical care service.
Understood. And what about the role in helping children and families manage type-one diabetes? I mean, there could be, I mean, other folks can respond, it doesn't just have to be DOHMH. We have, we're, we're, we're lucky here, we have all of you in one room, so we can ask these questions. Dr. Long, do you look like you want to answer this?
I'd love to start.
Go ahead.
My conviction is that the first step to managing type-one diabetes, and for a lot of what you've been asking about too, is, again, ensuring that every child has good access to primary care in New York City, and not just primary care, to, again, quote Chair Narcisse, comprehensive services, comprehensive primary care. I think that's, needs to be the cornerstone of any healthcare approach.
Thank you very much. Like I said, I'm looking forward to working with everyone on, on making people healthy and particularly increasing life expectancy, and it starts with our kids. And I think we have a lot of resources that already exist in the kids that we have in the schools, and the work that you guys are doing across the board, so I really appreciate that. I want to recognize that Councilmember, we've been joined by Councilmember Gutierrez, and I'll turn it back over to Chair Narcisse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things that I am always a big believer in, you have to reach people where they are, right? And right now, our youth are on social media. Have you considered, it's not a budget hearing, but I'm thinking out because it's in my head, that I want to understand, are you focusing on how to reach them? Because I heard you say you give literature, you approach, you go into the meeting, but are you reaching them where they are? Are you getting them to the door?
I think I'll, I'll let my colleagues at the Department of Health start about the overall approach to reaching kids in schools and with respect to social.
Yeah.
So at the Health Department, we are working on programs to address social media, the impact of social media within the communities as well. And as you may know, we have, you know, developed the Teen Space app that is available, and our A.C. from the Bureau of Child, Youth, and Families can talk about that a bit, Teen Space.
Yeah, can you tell me how many of our teens have you reached in the past year or so from social media platform?
Sure, I'd be, I'd be happy to talk about it. So Teen Space is a free mental health support that we're quite excited to have launched. It launched just last year, November, two thousand twenty-three, and it is available to any teenager ages thirteen to seventeen in, who lives in New York City. And it allows teenagers to connect with a licensed therapist through phone, video, or text. We are promoting Teen Space in a variety of ways, and that includes through social media to get the word out that this service is available, and also through a variety of other forms of outreach to schools, in-person presentations, webinars, et cetera. But knowing that young people clearly use social media quite a bit, it's been one of the strategies we've been using to make sure that they're aware the service is available to them.
Is that only about mental health, or are we talking about physical health as well? Because we have diabetes, sickle cell disease, we have all a bunch of, array of things that our communities are really suffering with, until kind of muscle, I mean, unfortunately, it's really too late when they get older, and then that's really damaging the whole structure of the, the body.
Yes, thanks for that question. Teen Space is specifically around mental health. We know that the Health Department also uses its social media, you know, accounts to promote other health behaviors and awareness, and we're happy to follow up with you about some more of the specifics about how we, you know, how we've been doing that.
Thank you. What was the process for obtaining approval to close your eight, eight school-based health centers? Was H&amp;H required to conduct a community needs assessment to ensure that students had adequate options to access care at other facilities?
When a school-based health center is closed, the state is involved in that process, and they will approve the closure. And then the Health Department, what was done from our perspective in making sure that we continue to try to provide those services, we put out an interest of intent letter asking to see whether or not providers were interested in being part of the reopening of the school-based clinics. And as mentioned, two will be reopening in the fall and in the spring, and the others will be, we will have nurses placed in those other schools at that time.
H&amp;H cited low usage rates of the school-based, which we just talked about, clinics, as a reason to shift resources and staff toward Gotham Health Centers. Does shifting care from a school-based model to primary and preventive care centers run by Gotham Health affects healthcare accessibility for students who are undocumented or uninsured, or uninsured. Is the care that they receive at other H&amp;H-run facilities a free?
So thank you for asking that question. It is really critical to emphasize that at New York City Health and Hospitals, is our, is our core mission to serve and help every New Yorker without exception, from every asylum-seeking child that comes into New York City each day now, to every child in school, to every adult that's been here for sixty years. So that's our core mission, our mantra, and I want to emphasize one of the things you said earlier, which is that there can oftentimes be barriers to accessing care, like my example of my patient that hadn't seen a doctor in forty-three years. And an important way to overcome barriers like that is to acknowledge the importance of outreach. And that's why for, at the eight schools where we transitioned our teams to our clinics where we can help five to ten times the number of students every single day, we were sure to make the schools aware and the parents aware and the children aware, not only of where there's a Gotham Health or Health and Hospitals hospital site within approximately one mile, but what other resources, including express care for medical or mental health needs there are. but what other resources, including express care for medical or mental health needs there are. As we in parallel, of course, were overall increasing our school-based clinic footprint, opening 16 new school-based mental health clinics.
I, I smiled because I know it's free, that part of free is free, but I still have to put you on the record for that. When it comes to Gotham Clinic, you still have some areas that don't have Gotham Clinics, that don't have that kind of access. And it's more probably, well, I would say close to a mile or a little more.
So with respect to the eight schools where we had school-based health clinics, we do have either a Gotham Health Clinic or in one example Bellevue Hospital is just down the street from one of them. So we do have healthcare centers that are within one, I think in one example, it's a little bit over a mile, but the rest are within a mile, which is again, either a Gotham Health Clinic or one of our hospital-based ambulatory care departments like Bellevue.
According to HNH website, there are four Gotham Health Centers in the Bronx. Eleven in Brooklyn, six in Manhattan, eight in Queens and one in Staten Island. Do all of those centers provide primary care, preventive care, mental health counseling and mental health treatment, substance abuse treatment or health education program that are tailored especially for young patients?
Absolutely.
All of them?
Yes. And to be clear, all of those, every Gotham Health Clinic provides primary and preventive care services. I'm a primary care doctor. I'm in one of the four clinics you mentioned in the Bronx. I provide mental health care to my patients. I do the PHQ screen for depression on 100% of my patients before they come into my office. I can deliver treatment to them. I can prescribe antidepressants or I can refer them, if they have serious mental illness or a variety of other needs, to, at my site in the Bronx, we have psychiatry on site. I don't know if Jason wanted anything about the connection point between mental health and primary care in general order to Gotham Health?
Yeah, I, I think to, to Dr. Long's point, I think, you know, when, when someone does need higher levels of care, there, there are those, those referral points to, you know, our acute care facilities where we might have more services that, that folks can take, take advantage of, so.
So I can say now, I'm going to say, let's talk about sickle cell disease, baby. I'm interested. Let's talk about sickle cell.
Can I just add something about the utilization? The Office of School Health evaluates the utilization of school-based clinics. And we always try to offer support to providers as well. And what we've noticed that when the services are very well-publicized and there are providers regularly staffed within the clinics, the utilization rates for the clinics are exceptional, so.
I've visited a couple and I love the idea of young folks coming to the clinics. I wish all the clinics can stay open, but as business part of my world, we have to make sure people are using it, but we have to promote it because I can have the best things next to me if I don't know about it. I'm not going to utilize it at all because I don't know it's there. So that's one of the thing you have, when I keep saying meet people where they are, the youth, I mean, the youth, the young folks doesn't go to clinics, especially it's a taboo for young men to go to clinic because you're so muscle-like, you're so strong and all this. All those stigma, all those difficulty, all the barriers that we have to look into, the people culture, that's, that's the reason culture competency is very important. And I thank you for the work you do, you know, we always talk about the importance of especially provided where needed the most and I appreciate your work. Sickle cell. Sickle cell, I mean, are we screening our young folks in the centers? Because I know one of them told me, but I don't know. Are sickle cells being screened throughout the centers that we have, school-based centers and?
In the school-based clinics, we have best practice protocols that we follow. However, school-based, I should say, sickle cell screening is not being done within the schools.
Okay. So where, how do you know? Because we have a lot of newcomers, new arrivals that are coming from country, probably not, never been, you know, treated or diagnosed or aware of their status. So how can we address that? Because it's more likely, I don't know, some folks don't want me to say it's a black disease, but it's, it's mostly black disease because 90 something percent. But anyway, how, how are we having that done? Because I know we have a lot of folks coming from West Africa, different part, Haiti. So I want to understand how we're doing that to make sure that they're not falling through the cracks until it's too late. Because as a nurse, I believe in preventive care. Yes, I do. Yeah.
So the school-based clinics follow best practices. And I'm sure that as time goes on, best practices don't at this point, as far as primary care and preventive care is covered. And as a previously practicing provider, sickle cell screening was not necessarily part of preventive care, but best practices change over time and there's a possibility as well that it will change.
I hope it's changed soon because we had a law in the book that where we want people to be. Because we want people to, to diagnose early. They can live the best of their lives, not later. Because of the new arrivals, making even more urgent for us to address that. And then they're mostly coming from West Africa and Haiti, the black migrants.
And I just quickly agree with you there. I, I think, yeah, to answer your question precisely, what's one of the most important things that we can do to evaluate patients and children for sickle cell disease is to get them into primary care. That's where we can do the appropriate blood tests, the appropriate workup and evaluation. I was at the Arrival Center this morning where we were welcoming asylum-seeking families that came in overnight last night. We had over 200 people came in overnight last night, predominantly families with children. We screen for communicable disease, offer urgent care proudly at our Arrival Center. Screen everybody for depression that's 12 and above, vaccinate everybody while they're with their family, including children at the Arrival Center. The next thing we need to do is to, to get all of these children into primary care so they can complete their vaccination series and get the appropriate workup and evaluation that they may have never received before, to your point. The way that we need, we're going to do that is we need to have the access and capacity across New York City to be able to see all of these incoming children. In addition to all of the New York City children that have already wanted to come to see us in our clinics. And that, again, is part of the rationale for wanting to bolster our New York City capacities to be able to offer primary care to every child existing New Yorker or newly arriving New Yorker.
Like we say, healthcare is a right. What difficulties do you foresee, I mean, foresee affecting the reporting that would be required by entry 341? Dr. Hayes?
We support the intent of the legislation. We would like to have a conversation with the council around logistical reporting times as well.
You know what problematic for me is just like when I ask a lot of questions, like those things are being done, but when we put it in a book, when you're trying to pass legislation, there's problems. So we need to approach it and as soon as you can, let's work on it. Because it's affecting people in the long run, especially with a lot of new arrivals that we have. Thank you. Before I turn, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, Chair Education, Chair Joseph. Before I do so, one second, I would like to acknowledge my colleagues, CM Abru and Yeager. And now you have it, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Just a couple of questions, not allowed. Where was your clinics, were the clinics operational during the 2020, 21 year? Or did COVID affect the availability of services through these facilities?
Thank you for the question, Chair Joseph. The, during the COVID pandemic, pandemic, the schools were closed. However, the services were pivoted to telehealth services in order to be able to still provide clinical needs to the, the students. COVID-19, as you all know, definitely impacted the clinics with the closure. We saw less patients, our reimbursement rates went down and we are still recovering. However, during the, the COVID pandemic, telehealth was the usage that was available to, to students and, and families.
And can you tell me what specific services were affected by that?
As far as?
During the pandemic, you said we.
The schools were closed.
I know. I was still teaching. I was still teaching, so I know it was closed. But what I'm saying is there were specific services that were primarily impacted because of the closure. You went on telepath. What, what else were you able to do?
We were providing clinical services through telemental health at that time.
Were there any other arrangement made when the students could not come into the buildings for them to go to other places?
If referrals were needed to be made through telehealth, they were also made that way as well.
Thank you. Do you collect the feedback from students and family about their experiences with student, school-based health clinics?
School-based health centers providers do surveys and those surveys, that information is kept within the school-based health centers themselves. The Office of School Health does not directly do those particular surveys.
And if you do, if you ever do get your hands on it, are you, do you implement some of the feedbacks that are provided by the families?
We don't normally see the services, but we still do work with the providers to, you know, implement whatever changes need to be made and to address whatever best practices that could be improved within the clinic. So the Office of School Health definitely works and supports the providers in that particular work.
Thank you. Do you maintain record of whether the school-based clinics are students' primary care provider? If so, how many students listed the base clinics as their primary care providers for the year 2023 and 2024?
The primary care provider information is, is kept with the school-based clinic provider, not with the Office of School Health. And we always, whether the student has a primary care provider or not, provide the services. And in the cases, as I mentioned earlier, knowing the primary care provider is helpful to support any sort of co-management of, of various diseases that need to take place. So the school-based health center provider does record that particular information, but that is confidential information that is kept with the school-based health clinic provider and is not given to the Office of School Health, or is not kept with the Office of School Health.
Got it. During the summer programming, when schools are closed, what are the alternatives for students?
Some school-based health centers are open in the summertime as well.
So if this, even if the student doesn't attend a school, can they attend another? Can they go to another shelter-based, I mean, school-based clinic if the site they normally go is closed?
Yes.
And what kind of outreach do you do? What's, this is for New York City Public Schools, what type of outreach do you do to make sure students and families know about these programming and how and what type of outreach?
I can speak to the, the Office of School Health supports the school-based health center. When the students, if they are new students coming into the schools, there are registration packets that are made available to the parents. They are available, the, the registration and the information is made available in parent-teacher meetings and the information about school-based health centers are normally on the New York City Public School websites.
Let's say I have no access to website, English is not my first language, what's the alternative for that family?
The registration packets are normally in, in the language or explained in the language of the, of the parent and the student.
Good afternoon. I would just add that we also, through communication, we, as Dr. Hayes said, enrollment upon enrollment, students are given the forms. But also throughout the academic school year, any opportunity we get to be able to share with families that the services are available. So parent-teacher conferences, any events at schools that we may have, wellness days and having, making sure we have continuous conversations as well as having posters and different media to let students know that and families know that these things are, that services are available. And also using our parent coordinators to support us in that area to make sure parents are way up to services.
Thank you. Will do. Do schools operate the same ways, in, in the same space of school nurse office or schools nurses considered part of the staff?
School-based clinics are different than nurses' offices. If you have a school-based clinic within your building, normally you do not have a nurse in that building. The selection process, as mentioned earlier, for having school-based health centers require the, the participation of not only the Office of School Health, but as well the health provider who may be interested in having the school-based health center. And then you have other requirements and legislation through the, to the state for setting up a school-based health center. Also, the medical room where the school-based clinic is held is of course a medical facility and it is usually outfitted for the purpose to provide medical care. Nursing offices are not usually outfitted in the same manner. And as I mentioned, if you have a school-based health center in your, in your school, you usually do not have a nurse in, in that school.
Thank you. Good to know. Are school social work staff at CBO-run school-based health clinics or school-based mental health clinics pay the same rate as the New York City Public School, um, social workers?
I, I don't have that information.
New York City Public School is here.
My apologies. We do not have the information on the rate that they receive through the school mental health clinic, but we can definitely get back to you with that.
We'll do a follow-up. We'll do a follow-up. How do students get their appointment during class schedules during the school day? How does that work? If I want to come in and see, come into the clinic, how does that work with my school schedule?
There are arrangements made between the school-based health clinic staff and, you know, the, the students and the, and the teachers within the schools.
And if there's a delay, can I, is it easily available for me to reschedule or what's the process?
Rescheduling because we are very, very much focused on making sure that the services are delivered to the student. So rescheduling is definitely an option.
Thank you. Chair?
May I add?
Sure.
May I just add that schools usually in collaboration with the health clinic organize scheduling and have a process in where students can see. And if there is rescheduling, so these conversations happen, so there's a clear process on how they can be seen, seen and or referred as needed.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Now we'll pass it on to my colleague, Chair Lee.
All right. I hope you guys are still attentive and awake. So I have a bunch of questions. So when I read the announcement that the mayor had today about the 16 new mental health clinics, school-based mental health clinics, I was like, yay. But then when I read part of the mental health continuum, I was like, no, because it's only $5 million. And so my question is, if you're taking 3.6 to start these new clinics, what is not getting funded?
I mean, the entire, the entire concept of the mental health continuum, so serving 50 schools, doing expedited referrals and opening these 16 clinics is part of that, that $5 million. And I think our hope is to continue to, I think, rise up these 16, these 16 schools, do some, do some additional billing and then reinvest that money. So there is this idea of, you know, using this money to start up these schools for that clinical staff and then reinvest what we get in billing.
Okay, but are they going to be in the red or are the school-based clinics also going to get enough reimbursements to pay the operational costs as well as all the other additional costs that we know don't get reimbursed, including the outreach education piece and all of that? And who's covering those costs right now in the school-based mental health clinics?
So I talked about the, the continuum schools and I'll, I'll hand it to my colleagues at DOHMH. But for the continuum schools, the, the $5 million and the 3.6 for Health and Hospitals does fully cover operating, operating costs and some additional funding, about $700,000 from the state is. and some additional funding, about seven hundred thousand from, the state is funding some of the construction and startup costs for those clinics as well.
Okay.
And I'll hand it for DOHMH about the funding for the other school-based.
Cause, yeah, and just to clarify, cause the reimbursement rates obviously are only for the actual sessions and the times where you see the students. But then as we know, there's a lot of outreach, education and everything that has to happen that's not included in that reimbursement fee. So I'm just wondering how that gets subsidized?
That's a great question. Thank you so much, Chair Lee. So right now, this is a challenge, right? With, with school-based mental health clinics. But we're really pleased to share, and I know you referenced this earlier, that the state has announced these, you know, new funding essentially for school-based mental health clinics, which enables providers to receive twenty-five thousand, right, per site that they want to open. If they're in what's considered a high-needs school district, they can also get another twenty thousand essentially. And it is intended to do largely what you're describing. It's intended to cover a lot of the non-billable costs that we know are so critical for a school-based mental health clinic to, to thrive in that, in that, you know, in its, in that setting. So it really is, is there to help with startup, with communication, with school personnel, recruitment, all of those things that are not billable.
Okay. And then for the Article twenty-eights versus the thirty-oneths, cause I know that the twenty-eights require a lot of capital funding to outfit the spacing, the ventilation, all of that stuff, right? So is that being covered by H and H in the school-based clinics? Like, how is that cost, the startup cost being funded?
For the, for the school-based mental health clinics, we are, we are providing some of that startup cost for those. And it's a, it's a lot less for the Article twenty-eights, so for the school-based, also the, for the mental health clinics than it is for the physical health.
Yes, yes, yes. The thirty-one's definitely a lot less than the twenty-eights for sure. And then my question though is for the thirty-one, Article thirty-one clinics, cause I know that there's a special additional application you can put in there to also offer primary care services on site. So do all the thirty-one clinics, Article thirty-one clinics that are offered in the schools, do you know if the providers of those licenses also offer that piece for the primary care? And is that available? Because Article twenty-eight's obviously are much more comprehensive and reproductive and, and includes some of the mental health piece. But the thirty-one's, which focus just on the mental health, I'm wondering if they also have the license to provide that primary care piece?
So there is an option, right, to provide some degree of health, physical health care, right, under the, under the Article thirty-one license, right? And so what we don't have on me right now is what, what number of those clinics are doing that? But we can definitely confer with our colleagues at the State Office of Mental Health, the licensing entity, and get back to you.
Okay. And then also, do you have a breakdown of which types of schools, like elementary, junior high, high school? Because the typical Article thirty-one's are only age thirteen and above. So I guess my other piece to this is for the, the providers like Institute Family Health, Community Healthcare Network, Mount Sinai. For the hospitals, I'm guessing I know the answer, but for the other providers, do they have that special piece of the license that is age under thirteen to include in the Article thirty-one? And again, can you give us a breakdown of, out of the hundred or so sites, what's the breakdown in the different types of education schools?
So clinics can provide services for youth under age thirteen.
Which, which, cause, okay.
Article thirty-one.
No, but you need to apply for those special licenses. So does that automatically? And, and the only reason why I know this is because I started in Article thirty-one at my former nonprofit. So that's why it's like, if you want to serve under age thirteen, you have to apply for an additional piece of the license. So I guess my question is for those providers here that are providing the services in the school-based clinics, if it's an elementary school or junior high school, do they have the additional licensing for thirteen and under?
So at the, at the time that the provider applies to open a school-based satellite clinic, like through the licensure process, they can indicate at that time which age groups they would like to serve. And, you know, if, or if they're serving a particular age group, they can always add on other ages later. So it's sort of built into the licensing process?
No, no, no. So, so it starts off with thirteen and over. If you want to serve thirteen and under, there's another additional process you have to go through after you open up the thirty-one. So I just want a clarification on how many of those are thirteen and under?
So we have Article thirty-one clinics across K through twelve.
Okay.
And so whatever license is necessary to function within that population is the license in which they have.
So can you give us a breakdown of what the different levels of education are and how many? For example, how many elementary schools, how many junior high schools, how many high schools?
I can't, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get you that information.
Yes, if you could follow up, that'd be awesome. Okay. And then also for the schools that have co-locations for D seventy-five, have you guys looked into the Article sixteen's as well? Because I think that would be amazing if we could also include that as part of the licensure. Because for the Article sixteen, the one thing that I always got frustrated with was that if you have an OPWDD diagnosis, right? I can't see them as an Article thirty-one clinic. And so is, has there been conversations or have you guys looked into possibly doing the Article sixteen's that can also be provided in the co-located schools?
So I think that's a great question and there are conversations around how to support seventy-fives. I think the thing, the thing to remember in terms of the types of clinics that we have and the schools that we serve is they have been built up over the course, I mean, since the eighties, right? And so the seventy-fives, you know, when they were choosing clinics, Article thirty-one's, we focused on districts one through thirty-two. And just by the nature of seventy-fives in terms of, they're supposed to already have IEP services. That doesn't mean we shouldn't help them and it doesn't mean that we can't have those conversations. It's, it's not something that we have approached at this time. I think there are some conversations with the continuum in serving the seventy-fives and that's going to take a longer amount of time to sort of figure that out because the needs are slightly different.
Yeah. I think that'd be great if we could have that one day, but that's why I was just curious if those conversations are happening. And also for the, for the, in terms of the operation of the mental health clinics and health clinics, the, the providers that are in the report listed here, for the ones that are in the, do they, do they, do we know if they have experience working in schools? And I know that each group probably has different ways of administering services. And so what is the standard? I know that there's the state standard and the licensing standard, but then aside from that, how are you all in terms of your oversight, making sure that they're collecting similar data across the board? If you could speak to that?
Thank you for that question. That's a really great question. I do first want to say that there's lots of agencies involved and insurance companies, which I'm sure you know. What we require in the schools that we're in is that we require utilization data. I will put a caveat to that to say that we're also developing better ways of gathering data so we can truly understand the cost of what mental health costs are to, to provide in schools. So we have staff who are in a select number of schools. And what our staff does, the school mental health staff does, is that they work with both the CBOs and the principals. So the CBOs are under the HIPAA regulations. They provide us, like I said, exclusively with utilization data. We don't use PHI. And we gather, we understand what the utilization of the service is.
I, I know that with the, the thirty-one's and the twenty-eight's, the tendency is usually because Medicaid reimburses higher than private insurance and other insurances. I know that the, the clientele mostly is around the Medicaid clients. But how, how has the outreach been to like the just general population? And to, to just back up a point that was brought up previously by one of the co-chairs, I mean, the chairs. You know, how, how are other community members, are they allowed to use the services, are they not? Because I know it's technically supposed to be open to everyone, so, yeah.
So we use a building model, so everybody in the school has access to the thirty-one. I don't want to speak for the twenty-eight's. I believe that folks have already talked about that. These services aren't available to the community. And however, we offer funding, not us, but the funding that the, the CBOs are provided. The expectation is that they're supposed to serve anybody who walks through the threshold, right? So we encourage them to see any child that walks through the door. We work with them to be able to do that. See, their CBOs have different kinds of models that they use. And so we make sure that all of the students underinsured as well as uninsured are able to be seen.
Okay, great. And then can you just, you know, this either for DOE or, or the mental health clinics, can you sort of walk us through what happens if there's incidences in the school? You know, if a student is experiencing a mental health crisis, what role does the SBH or SBMHC staff play? Cause I know that a lot of times school administration will talk to the, you know, school safety agents or maybe call nine-one-one, but that's sort of supposed to be a last resort. And so just wanted to know if you had that breakdown as well?
Sorry, takes a little time to get over here. So in the schools, when a child is, whether it's being escalated or whether they're having some type of trauma during the school day, the crisis team is activated.
Okay.
And then through the crisis team, there is an initial level of superficial evaluation, right? Do we need to refer to the social worker? Do we need to just maybe get something to eat, right? If we get to the point of referring to the social worker, the social worker then is able to use the clinic as another assessment point, which deters us from having to call nine-one-one on a number of occasions. Because that other level of assessment can allow them to actually talk about what next steps can be taken, talk about referrals that can be made versus having just to go to nine-one-one. So there is a clear process that involves the clinics once they're there. And actually, when I attend the meetings, we make sure that it's very clear with the schools and with the clinics that they're another point of assessment.
Nice, okay. I'm going to pause there for now and then maybe if I think of one later, I'll ask if I can ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much. I'm a big supporter of the school-based health clinics and I'm a little confused. So in the wonderful briefing that the staff did, they listed what Kathy Hochul as governor and what, what clinics will be able to exist based on her money. I guess that's five point one, one hundred and thirty-seven satellites and eighty-two high-needs schools. So, but you're talking about ten. Can you give us the addresses and the schools of the ten that you're talking about in terms of cutting? Is that what's happening? What ten are you talking about? You've got ten listed that you are referring to Manhattan, Queens, one in Staten Island and so on. What list is that?
Are you, uh, you're referring to the H and H closures?
I am.
Okay.
Is there a list?
Yeah, so I can start. We have eight sites.
Eight sites, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure as, as always, answering the question precisely. So just to zoom out for a second, I have the list here and I'll.
Cause I haven't seen it on any paper. Maybe I'm missing it.
Yeah, we can, I'm, we're happy to share it with you. I have the eight right here. Just to zoom out for a second to contextualize it, one of the things we talked about earlier was that we're making a series of changes at H and H now related to school health.
I don't think I'm going to like them.
Well, let me, let me try to explain and then you can, you can as always be the, the judge. So we are increasing the number of school-based clinics that we're operating through H and H. We're increasing the amount of mental health services provided specifically in schools. And we're increasing the number of children that we're able to treat in primary care across New York City. The way that we're doing that, just to go through it real fast, is, I believe, as you know, as a primary care doctor myself.
I heard it all.
Good care, right place, right care, right time. Over time, I, sorry if this is a little repetitive. But at our clinics, the eight clinics that we have here, these are small clinics, which typically have only an NP and a PCA. They don't have dental care, they don't have vision care, only a handful have mental health services. Reproductive health care has not been utilized in these clinics. Whereas in our other clinics, our Gotham Health clinics, our hospital-based ambulatory care departments, there's so many people voting with their feet to come and see us there that we now have a wait time of about two weeks to see a, a new patient that's a child. Over time with these eight clinics here, the utilization has gone down to, on average, across the eight clinics, two visits, two primary care visits completed per day.
Okay.
So that could be one child in the morning for primary care.
Brandeis, are Brandeis and King on that list? Brandeis High School, eighty-fourth Street, or King, one-twenty-two Amsterdam?
No, they're not.
Okay. So then the question is for the clinics that will continue to exist, like those two and others, will they have additional services? Will there be any change to them? The reason I ask is I have been, I think, to all the school-based clinics in Manhattan and all the schools. And I think everything that's been said today is correct. They do need more, maybe not where you're talking about where the wait lists are. But they do need more support from the students. They need more reimbursement because of the, the best is the peer-to-peer, right? Am I understanding? It's not reimbursable. It's the best type of service and support. So you need to, you know, it's not your fault that you can't get that reimbursement. It would be nice if it was changed. But what I'm saying is where there are clinics that, that exist, like these two that I just mentioned, will they have any extra services? Because what I'm concerned about is, as you suggest, students don't leave the school to get services. They will not go across the street. They're not going to a clinic nearby. So I guess my question is, in addition to what you're talking about, more mental health and so on, will all the clinics that currently exist under H and H get more support? Or is it going to be about the same? Will they get anything additional?
Well, just, I'll quickly start and I'll turn to my colleagues at Department of Health because the two aforementioned clinics are likely operated by, by somebody else. But, so for, just to be clear, what we're doing at H and H is a ser, a couple of different changes here. Overall, we're taking the eight school-based health clinics that we've have had, that we've operated. And we're transitioning those care teams so that they can help five to ten times the number of students and children, most children, students, every day. And people are voting with their feet that they want to come to my Gotham sites that have comprehensive care. That's why we have a wait list compared to only two visits per day in the form of school-based health clinics. But as part of doing that, just wanted you to know, because we've been very intentional about this, we are opening sixteen, so twice the number of school-based mental health clinics. Making the point, and I hope everybody, this is clear for, for council, we believe in school-based clinics, we believe in school-based mental health. We are doubling down literally on our, our school-based health services by doubling the number of clinics that we had and making them school-based mental health clinics.
Can we still get that list at some point though?
Yes, you can, and I'll defer for the two clinics mentioned.
So the two clinics that are reopening, one this spring and the other in the fall, one will be at Norman Thomas High School and the other one will be Grand Street in Williamsburg area. As mentioned earlier, the other sites that will not be reopening will be placing nurses in those school sites to deliver the care that nurses are able to provide.
So at King and Brandeis, you're going to have nurses and not school-based? Is that what you're saying? Or you don't know?
If I'm not mistaken, those are not on the list.
Okay, as long as they're not on the list, I'm checking. Cause nobody seems to have a list. So it's hard to know what is or is not on the list. I'm just saying. You're going to give me your list. I hear you, Dr. Long.
So we'll be able to send you a list.
Lists are helpful, you know, facts and things like that.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Those clinics are going to continue to, to be open.
I know, but they need support. With all due respect, I'm in the clinics, I know. They need, I don't know just these two. I certainly know GW very well also. These clinics need a lot of support in addition to what you're stating, even though they exist, they need other aspects. If we're talking about school-based healthcare, we want it to be the best. You want it to be the best. I'm just saying these two in particular, they need support. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Chair Joseph have some question?
Yes, I do. Just wanna, we'll go back real quick. What is the average total of staff in each SBHC and SBHMC in terms of by title, whether they're full-time and part-time?
So, the school-based health center providers staffing is information that we and the Office of School Health do not keep because they're not employed by DOE or DOHMH. So, we don't have that information. We could try to get it for you. The school-based health center provider, the Office of School Health oversees the school-based health centers. So, we provide support through technical assistance, management, operations. The school-based health provider could be a health, a hospital system. So, they are employed, those staff members are, would be employed by that hospital system.
New York City Public Schools, would you guys have that information?
Sorry. Good afternoon. What we would have is who is located at the site. So, the administration would know who is working at their site, so that's what they would have. So, if, I would have to collect that from each site. But we, so if you come to my central office, I don't have it, but the schools would definitely know who is employed and who's working with them. Am I answering your question? Just wanted to be clear.
So, we wouldn't have, one central area would have all that information? We wouldn't keep that information central?
No, because they're not employed by us. They're employed by the CBO that then is working with the school, right? So, they employ them. But we would at least, we need to know who's in the building with the children.
Correct, that's why I'm asking that question. We need to know who's in the building, who's servicing our children. So, would you be able to get that information back to us?
From the principal of said schools, yes.
Absolutely, thank you. Do you currently know if there's any existing vacancies in the centers or the clinics? You wouldn't have that information either.
I would know that firsthand, no ma'am.
So, you would get that to me? Interesting. All right, I have two more questions. For each of the SBHC listed in Local Law 12, 2016, what is the total number of percentage of students using them based on school, service utilized, housing status, and grade level? That's one of the reporting bills. It was due the end of April. My apologies. DOHMH will be submitting a report.
So, as mentioned, there are 138 school-based health centers. The lists of, that you're requesting, we don't have with us now, but we can get it back, get back to you.
That would be very helpful, okay.
I think you asked about utilization rates. You asked about how many students in temporary housing. What I will say is that one of the criterias for placing a school-based health center in a school is the number of students in temporary housing. So, that is one of the criterias that we use in meeting the needs of the student population that is usually high-need as well.
Yeah, because we also need data, right? Data drives the policies. That's how you determined you were gonna open a clinic was based on that data, right? So, we still need that data to analyze it and look, making sure we're doing our part, as you do your part as well. So, I'm big on data. I'm a, I was an educator for 20 years. So, data drive my instructions. So, as a council member and a chair of the Education Committee also drive policy, where we put our money in, where we invest our money, and how we support New York City children. So, I'm always gonna ask for data because that's, we need that. We can't just throw money in the wind if we don't know the right places to put the money.
Totally understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do students have to enroll to receive services, and do they need parental consent?
Because the focus of the school-based health center is to provide care to all students, they do not have to enroll. We will provide services to anyone or any student that is in the school building. Parental consent, when students do register for services, parental consent is required through the registration process for some of the services that they will be receiving. Parental consent is not necessarily for sexual and reproductive health services, which by New York state law are confidential.
You have SBMHCs in charter school and yeshivas? Okay, how many do you have in those two?
We have school-based health centers in public school buildings only.
Not in yeshivas or in...
We provide services to public schools. And of course, you know...
But no charter school, no yeshiva? I think somebody's trying to get your attention here.
From the school-based mental health clinic perspective, there are also clinics that are in charter schools and in yeshivas. I know that the Department of Health, well, particularly the Office of School Health, they work specifically with the clinics that are in public schools. But there are providers that do apply for clinics to serve some of the other schools that you named.
So, you know any, the numbers? How many of them?
We'd have to get back to you, I don't have the data on me.
Okay. So, who creates the curriculum and educational materials for health education being offered at those clinics?
In our school-based health centers, we provide clinical care within the school-based clinic. We do not provide health education within the classroom. That health education within the classroom would be under, I guess, the Department of Education.
Is there any input from the public or community-based organization? Do any public, how you come up with the curriculum, do you know? Do you have an idea?
No, I will defer to DOE for that. Good afternoon, how are you?
Blessed and alive.
Amen. So, our New York City Public Schools Health Education Department has worked with DOHMH to create various curriculum. So, curriculum, HIV lessons, maternal infant and reproductive health, as well as LGBTQ-affirming instruction. And so, partnering with DOHMH. And in order to put that curriculum together, to then share with our children, I would also add that the school-based health clinics are an integral part of the school. So, they also always have information that they can share with us to make sure we are engaging in relevant curriculum for our young people.
I have a side question. Like, when those young folks have complicated, I know they can come without consent from the parents. Is there any phase that you reach out to the guardian or the parents for the underage youth? Do you know? Because I'm always concerned about, you know...
So, I'm gonna defer to DOHMH, but there is a consent piece, but I'm gonna defer. I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Some of the young folks, they don't get consent. But if something get complicated, do you reverse back to the guardian? And do you have somewhere in the policy that you have to get the parents? I know some of the things that we do without consent. But when it get complicated, which phase that we kind of engage the parents?
As a clinician, in those situations, of course, you are always going to weigh on the side of what is in the best interest for not only the student, but also in making sure that their care is appropriate. So, I think that it varies on the circumstance as to when you would engage parents into the decision-making process.
Is it professional call or policy call? Do you have it in the book, or is just like they, according to the healthcare delivery, whoever delivering the care decided on it, or you have a policy on that?
You could speak to that. Go ahead.
I'd be happy to speak to that for the school-based mental health clinics. So, for those, parental consent is required. There are circumstances in which the clinician can make a determination that it's more appropriate to waive the required parental consent. This is all governed by state Article 31, essentially. So, it governs the requirements around parental consent or waiving parental consent. And the, you know, the determination to sort of break confidentiality with a client really is determined by the clinician's scope of practice. And when there are circumstances that are met, thresholds that are met, including, you know, potential harm to self or others, there are grounds under which the clinician, according to their scope of practice, is able to break confidentiality.
How many total contracts does the city have with organization or entities that... I'm gonna leave that one. I'm gonna leave the contract one. I'm gonna come back to that. I'm gonna come back to that. So, how are we doing with state funding? Let me see, for a minute. The governor announced in the state, I want to get some state one, because we have to get money from state. The governor announced in the state of the state funding for providers to start satellite mental health clinics in any school that wants one. Fifty-two high-need schools in the city have received funding awards. Are you aware of any other providers and public school that have applied for such funding? How is... How we can, I mean, when I said how we can, I'm afraid of that question too. Because if you don't get it, then you say the city did not help you, we did not help enough. How you applying, and because we know there is a need, whether we like it or not, especially underserved communities, to not have access to health care. And that's the reason we're having all this hearing. Because we know it's real in our city, it's real all over, but we want the city to be better. So, that's how we kind of trying to ask all the question to address the inequities in health care, especially in the community, like underserved community like mine, some part of mine. So, in those call from the governor, how we, because I know sometimes the money coming from federal, they say the money out there or the state, but our city is not kind of fast enough to get in the, you know, to get in the pile. So, are we getting those application done? Are we getting some in our cities? What is the plan? Are we gonna get them?
So, the funding is actually state funding. And we at DOHMH don't have access to those applications. The funding is going for mental health care providers who are sponsoring school-based mental health centers. So, what we've done is we've encouraged the providers to apply for the funding. This is, this is funding that is for the mental health care providers to apply for.
And I will say, from the H&amp;H perspective, we submitted 16 applications and got 16 schools funded, so...
That's impressive.
Thank you.
Because one of the things that I come upon, there's a lot of money that come from federal and state, and they kind of like not making it to the places where they're supposed to make it. In the meanwhile, there is a need, but the agency, the different areas not pushing fast enough for us to get our fair share in the city of New York. And in the meanwhile, we stay with a lot of underserved populations. So, thank you for that.
That's right. I think it was, it was a priority for H&amp;H when they, you know, released that RFP for us to get that money for these 16 schools to supplement what is already being provided.
And for those that, that kind of listening, the others that are listening, I hope they run fast enough in the money that the federal have for us too, so we can get that. I mean, I'm telling you, I'm a kind of like upset when I'm hearing funding's supposed to be available, and by the time we hear about it, our folks, agencies or different department not applying from federal or the state money.
If I may just add to that, what is currently happening with the allocation of the additional state funds is that any time a provider is applying for a satellite license, which is required to open in a school, they're automatically eligible for the supplemental funding now. So, it's really a nice improvement over having to submit a separate application. It's happening as they're opening the clinics. They basically have to do an attestation, and then they're granted the funds. So, it pretty much should be guaranteeing that as providers are opening in schools, they will be able to do so with the startup funds from the state.
That's a good news, so we're not gonna lose out. New arrivals. We have a lot of new arrivals. For those clinics, SBMHCs have reported challenges with recruitment and retention of Spanish-speaking clinicians, which is needed now more than ever due to the new arrivals and growing number of other than English-speaking children in New York City public school. I know French and Creole is big in my district. How is the city helping facilitate recruitment and retention of such clinicians for both CBOs, providers, and DOE staff? What type of language access support currently exists at SBHCs and SBMHCs? Are their staff available on-site to offer translation services? How is the care provided for new arrivals different from the care provided for other students?
So, the, one of the things that is important is, of course, making sure that there is a line of communication between you and the students to be able to deliver the care. So, the language access is available through our language lines that we have, as well as through providers that speak that particular language. So, one of the things that we definitely prioritize is making sure that there is either language line access or a provider that can communicate directly with the students. Yes, there is this difficulty of communication and language barrier is fully understood and being addressed as much as possible.
And I'm gonna tell you, I went to, the couple that I went to, I was very impressed because the population they were serving, there was a lot of language in there that they needed. And I like to see that because with the translation, we know things, message kind of can be lost in the process of translating. So, physical, having people, especially when you come to care of our young folks, if we can speak the language, I feel like it's a great thing. So, thank you for that.
You also mentioned with the mental health clinics, the Office of, the State Office of Mental Health is really focused on making sure that their clinicians have language preference as well as cultural competency in how they deliver the mental health services to the students as well.
And as you can see, we had a long hearing yesterday with a lot of migrant, the newcomers. And we had a hearing about all the things that they're facing. And one of them, it was language access. Most from West Africa speak French, but there's a lot of folks that don't speak the French, and people assume they all speak French, a lot of them, but they, not all. And they have their native language, and language access is the biggest thing we're facing, especially with the new arrivals. I know how difficult it is. So, now, have you encountered any report that you have dialect that the folks are coming that no one can translate?
We try to make sure that... We try to make sure that we, we have staff that is available, that can speak that particular language and to communicate with the, the students as well.
And one of the things that we realized too, even me, for me, as being a nurse in the emergency room, the, like, not only having the access, it's just like the person to kind of like, you can speak the same language sometimes with the stress, the person is not getting it. So you have to be sensitive. That's why culture competency is very, very important. And another one, I'm, that she just put to me, is having the access at all time. Because some, some of them were saying that sometimes when they get the line to get the language, especially on the line, they're not getting folks twenty-four seven. It's just like a certain time, they cannot communicate with the person coming to those facilities. I know you don't have to have in the school because it's daytime. But I'm saying like in general, have you heard that language access in the clinic? Let me go back, not you, go back to Dr. Long, because in the hospital, are you encountering that? Because some, the migrant was saying that, that when they get there, they cannot get communication even through the line.
Yeah. So I would love to talk about language and also I just wanted to, I wrote down something you said a second ago and I just wanted to draw the point out because I think it's a really important one. US is the same care being provided to asylum-seeking students and existing New York City students. I just wanted to be really, really clear that the care at New York City Health and Hospital, starting at the Arrival Center, is the same for everybody without exception. The only difference in care, which is a really important one, is the difference of what we do here compared to what's done in Texas. For example, I was at the Arrival Center this morning for a couple of hours. I saw kids and family members getting vaccinated, going through and being screened for depression. We screen everybody twelve and above for depression. We vaccinate kids for MMR, varicella. None of that's done in Texas. So by the time people get here, there is huge potentially life-threatening opportunities that are missed, not taken. And when people get here, it's critical that we provide people with their human right of healthcare in their chosen language. And what I saw this morning was exactly that being done for every family that was entering our doors while I was there or that came overnight last night. We also at Health and Hospitals have a couple of unique resources just related to language access. For example, not only are ninety percent of our frontline staff at our humanitarian centers and Arrival Center bilingual, many are trilingual intentionally, bringing on people to speak French. But we even have some clinics in our system called, one is a, unfortunately council member Brewer is gone, but she's a proud advocate for Roberto Clemente, which is one of our clinics that's unique at Health and Hospitals in that we're insistent that one hundred percent of staff speaks Spanish. So you, if you go there, it's, it's to your point of, you don't have to wait for language line. You don't have to wait for, to, you know, wait for somebody to get on, to be confused with where you should go, things like that. One hundred percent of people will speak your language if you speak Spanish and go to that clinic, which is predominantly a mental health clinic. So when we're screening people for depression at the Arrival Center, anybody that screens positive, we immediately, in your chosen language, will pair you with a social worker a matter of minutes later, doing a warm handoff. And then we can make a referral and an appointment for you at a clinic where literally one hundred percent of staff speak your language. Don't need language line to offer that. So just wanted to make a couple of those points, that the care, we're proud to provide the same care to everybody, but there's a distinct, important distinction between what we do here in New York City, what we proudly do, and the lack of what's done in other places like Texas.
Thank you. And all the school, we have language access alternative services that they need. All of our schools, I mean, for the, for the clinics within the school.
We make sure all services are available to the students, either through the staffing or through the language line services.
Thank you. I appreciate that. What is the average total number of the staff? I think the council members touched that already. They have. Oh, I have, oh, council member Denneritz. Where I was. Okay. There's some complaint about the waiting time, so I want to know. There have been reports of long wait times for student to receive care at SBHCs due to the staff shortage. Are you aware of that? What is the average time of waiting for them?
I actually don't have that available and I can get back to you with that information.
Okay. Let's say they miss their appointment, they have to go to class. So how long it takes for them to actually get another appointment?
As was discussed earlier, there is.
Yeah, I heard it, but I just wanted to know.
You know, there are mechanisms in place to reestablish the appointment and work with the student and, and the teacher and the clinic to make sure that the student is given priority and seen.
So how long averagely that they have to wait? If they miss their appointment, they cannot wait for the class?
I don't have that information.
Okay.
I would have to get back to you with that.
What is the, the average total number of staff in each SBHCs and SBMHCs?
So for the staffing within school-based health centers and the school-based mental health centers are usually set up by the actual sponsors or providers. So we do not necessarily have that particular information.
Thank you. What are the turnover rates? You don't know for the staffing, you wouldn't be able to answer that either?
Would not be able to, but can try to get that information.
You can track it? Okay. Okay. So. Let me see, there's some other question that I need to ask before I finish. I don't want to hold you all evening, but some of the questions, we go into budget season, so we still have to get, make sure that we have things in order. In the meanwhile, I will pass it on to Chair Lee. I think some of the question for mental health. You finished? You good? All right. CM Rita Joseph, you good? Okay, so I'm almost done then. That's very good. Hours of operation and with times? Anybody can answer that? No?
The school-based clinic hours are open, the school-based clinics and the school-based mental health clinics are open during the same times that the schools are open.
So they don't have no extended hours in the school? Just exactly from whatever the time the school functioning?
From the time the school is open.
I got you. Thank you. Let me see. Sorry, we're working together to make sure most important question are being asked. And then since we go into budget season, so whatever that we have to do ourselves on our part, if we can support anything to subsidize, because we are here to represent New York City. And as a nurse being in the seat there, so that's why I'm taking a little time to make sure all the question I ask, so we can make sure the best way we can represent, especially when it comes to underserved community, there is no excuses for us. So that's the reason. What are the impacts of social media on mental health? Has DOHMH noticed any related trend among students especially? If so, what step are you taking to address this issue?
So this is an issue that is a priority for the Health Department and we are currently taking a very close look at those important questions. And as we are learning more about this, I'm happy to get back to you with some more specifics. Yeah, I think that, yeah, that's probably, yeah, I think we'll leave it, we'll leave it at that, but absolutely a priority and, and very much concerned about impact of social media on youth mental health.
Because our children are living on social media nowadays. And self-esteem is a big problem too. And bullying, I don't want to say that is down, but we still have to pay attention to that. Social media is a good thing, but it can be a bad thing in our society. How are SBHCs involved in identifying, identifying signs of lead exposure, exposure in children? What step are you taking to address evidence of lead exposure? Do you have any lead exposure that you know of in our building, in the school building? For young folks?
We, with that, within the Health Department, we do have a lead prevention program that we work along with the primary care providers who do lead testing among their younger kids. Usually for best practices, lead testing is done at an early age and then based on the level, will then decide whether or not environmental interventions need to take place. So that is usually done at a, you know, primary care level early, early on. And we also do have within the Health Department, early intervention programs that also work with families who have had lead exposure and can have some developmental delays as well.
Since we've been having issues, especially when it comes to public housing that we have, have you seen any of those children? Because at one point, we have a lot of housing, public housing, where young folks been exposure, been exposed to lead. So in the testing, so should I, I don't know who can answer that. Through the testing, are we testing our children still for lead, especially not, I know at early age we do, but especially in, since we have clinics in the, in the school building, are we approaching that as well to make sure our children are being? Because we know, you just mentioned the damage that lead can do to your, to you as a person.
So we can follow up with you on that.
Okay. Chair Joseph, you have a couple of questions?
Yeah, just have a quick question. In terms of suicide among young people, you have a mental-based clinic. What are, are you seeing any trends and what, and if you are, what are we doing? And that can go across the board. Doesn't necessarily just have to be DOH. It can be H and H as well. As we're receiving new New Yorkers, what are you seeing in terms, in terms of suicide ideations among young people? Because we're seeing a trend going up in numbers and what, what is being done to support young people around that area? And teen space, you talked about, I had a quick question around teen space. I know it's from thirteen to seventeen. Do you need parental consent to use it?
I'll, I'll enter the teen space question, then I'll go back to your original question. For the teen space, yes, you do need parental consent to use it. And the same waiver exceptions that I described earlier also apply in the case of teen space. In the case of suicidality, so what we do know is, and this is a population level, you know, estimate I'm giving you rather than specifically what's happening in school-based mental health clinics. We do know that over the past ten years, which in this case, our data is going from two thousand and eleven to two thousand twenty-one, we have seen rates of suicide ideation increase from eleven point six percent to fifteen point six percent among New York City high school students.
And what, what is being done to support students with suicide ideations?
Yeah. There's, I can speak a little bit about the Health Department perspective, but I think the DOE does quite a bit around suicide prevention, so I'd also, you know.
Yeah, we passed a bill in the council, nine eighty-eight, to be available in all public schools. That was a bill council member, Botcher and I, we co-sponsored together.
So with nine eighty-eight specifically, yes. So one of the initiatives that was mentioned earlier, the Mental Health Continuum, one of the areas that the Department of Health is collaborating with the Department of Education on.
And H and H.
And H and H. Well, it's, the collaboration is among all three of us for sure.
I fight for this very hard every year. So we need a baseline in this budget.
So specifically, one of our goals is to ensure that there is widespread knowledge of the availability of nine eighty-eight and children's mobile crisis teams that can come out to any of the schools. And just making sure that, that school, students, school personnel are aware of that is really been a priority of ours. So that's, that's part of the collaboration that's happening. Happy to turn it over to you.
Hi, how are you? I would build on that. Doing a lot of awareness and understanding for staff around, so what does it look like, right? Because sometimes it doesn't, suicide or the thoughts of suicide doesn't look the way we think it's going to look. Actually, there's no look, right? But being able to see the signs and being able to have relationships with students that you can ask the question, are you okay? What's going on? And having students feel safe. So doing trainings for staff so that they can understand what that looks like. We've also been engaging with trainings for students, right? What does it feel, what does it feel like to not feel like me? What are the signs, not only for myself, but for my friends? So that they can become peers, supporters, right? We're also working with parents, having parents being able to, again, recognize what is not recognizable. And being, really being able to create a cycle of support through all of our partnerships, but where you can see a through line, so that there is no crack, right? So that our children do not fall through the crack. And so that's what we've been working on and continuing to do a lot of research, a lot of inquiry and listening a lot to our young people.
We have to. We have to listen. And thank you for making sure that families are part of this educational journey. And I keep saying that, and the chance I could say, I say this over and over. Parents must be included in these conversations as well.
And just from the, for a little bit more on the H and H perspective, especially with the Mental Health Continuum, because that is such a powerful program affecting so many kids in so many schools. Part of that work is, you know, having the clinician supporting the schools and identifying individuals in crisis and how to support those individuals with or without the clinician. So we're not calling nine one one as well, right? So accessing things like nine eighty-eight, accessing things like the clinician on site, or accessing things like the care that we provide in our Q care facilities in our clinics, right? So I think, you know, the, the continuum is such a powerful model because it is such a great partnership between, you know, you all in City Council, you know, the administration, H and H, DOHMH, DOE and the advocates, that I think it's, it's this great model of how this can be successfully done in, in schools across the city.
Just add to one thing on, I think you just bring up a really important point. And it's like one of those examples of what's emblematic of New York City doing something that's unique and powerful. And now if we could do a good job of it here, others can and should follow. I just want to give another quick example of that. At the Arrival Center, you asked about newly arriving students, what we do to engage them, what the, what care we offer to them. I'm not familiar with any other city that does universal PHQ or depression screening for everybody twelve and above, every single person coming to their city as a matter of minutes after they arrive at our Arrival Center. But I think it's another good example of in New York City, we weren't going to wait for somebody else to do it first. There was no blueprint about this, no playbook, but we saw the incredible trauma that these unfortunate children have been through. So we acted first. And now I'm really proud that we've had a hundred, over a hundred thirty thousand asylum seekers come through the Arrival Center. We screen everybody twelve and above for depression. That's a, has a huge impact.
That's a win-win for the city. Our asylum seekers, as being one of the people who were at the frontline down under that bridge in Texas, when I spoke to them, they, I've traveled five months, I've traveled six months on the road. I've lost family while I'm traveling to this spot in Texas. So we know the trauma they carry. And thank you so much for being able to provide the care that they need. And we will, Mental, Mental Health Continuum for us has to be baseline in the budget and it has to be expanded more across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. That's why you, when you have a teacher, because I was thinking about it. You got to it for first because you understand the dynamic of our youth in the school building. And what is, I heard the statistic like increased to fifteen percent. What you think is the cause of it? Yeah, that was. I know you love, it's good exercise for you because we're sitting here. Yeah, you had giving the, you see an increase. What you think is the cause of the increase is the new folks that are coming in the city? The new diagnosis that we're making, what's causing increase?
You were referring to the increase in suicide.
In the suicidal, yeah.
I think honestly, it's everything, right? It's what we're seeing all over the country. It's after COVID. I think we tend to believe that suicide just started happening. It hasn't. There's more awareness. There's more people talking about it, right? In social media, right? So the good side of social media, right?
Yeah.
Talking about suicide. So it's more of an awareness, right? So I don't necessarily say, you know, increase, increase. It's.
Increase. Sometimes you have some a disease, if I may, that if you're not having the screening done, you think that you don't have it because all the numbers you're getting is making good sense. But in the meanwhile, there's people that's not coming out, you're not testing it. it. So now, since we're exposed to it, maybe that's what the increase, maybe more people talking about it? What is that? You are getting somewhere with me, and I'm trying to get with you.
I think it's a combination.
Combination.
I think it's a combination, right? The way we think about life, the way we look at life after COVID. And it's not just indicative of New York, right? I think what, and if I dare say so, right? A lot of these things, we were doing before COVID around mental health. But what COVID, you know, lit that fire under us and saying is like, wow, you need to do more of it, you need to do it more consistently, and you need to make sure all parties are involved. Because if everyone isn't involved, we'd lose something, right? There's a possibility of us losing someone. And so focusing on the increase plus, because if, right? And we can attribute increase to any day of the week, we can attribute a reason for an increase, right? But it's more about, what are we doing to have a decline? If there is such, right? Because I'm not okaying an increase.
Increase.
Because I think it's a cross, right? But is there such a thing as a decline? And how can we really invest in understanding the different levels of mental well-being? And having those conversations with our children from small, right? It's never too early. It's never too early to talk about physical well-being. It's never too early to talk about, when you feel sad, what do you do? And how do we make that happen consistently? How do we make it happen in our classrooms? How do we make it happen at norms with our families at home? And of course, at our clinics?
I appreciate it. We came a long way. I'm very proud to be in the city of New York. Despite all our problems, we're willing to tackle things together. And if one thing that COVID led us to do is to work better together to improve the city. Despite of the new arrival people have issue with, but this is New Yorkers. And I think that when Dr. Long was talking about, so excited, they're always about the opportunity to do better. And that's why we are here. Dr. Haines, I know when you have a, a, a person that understands the inequities, I'm, it's just like, having different faces representing New York City and address it and coming with the cultural competency, know the problem that we have and willing to deal with it and face it, is the best way. Because being a nurse in this city of New York, I have tell you that, I can tell you that I enjoy every bit of it every day, because I believe in New Yorkers. And like we said, we want to be the first online to address things that we need to address and to be the role model we're supposed to be. So having said that, I wanted to say thanks to my colleagues, all my colleagues, all the chair, Chair Lee, Chair Rita, Joseph, and Chair Shulman, and all the staff, amazing supporter, the council, the team from Ferdinand, for everyone that working together and you working together to be here, so for us to address the issues. Despite the new arrivals, I still believe that New York City, we in it to win it every day, to do the best we can. And I appreciate your patience. So I thank you. We're gonna continue with other things that we need to continue, but I do appreciate you. And I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. And everyone that stayed for the time, thank you, appreciate you. Because that's how New York City, we're gonna live by example. So thank you. The best we can be. Thank you. And of course, I cannot forget my Chief of Staff, all the staff that make us actually continue doing our work. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, I now open the floor to public testimony. And then, sorry, we finished? Thank you. Thank you. You gave us all the time, you know, that we needed to address, you know, the issues, the questions. Thank you. And if you want to stay, don't count on me, you can stay all you want. I'm gonna be, be here for a little longer. I now open the floor to the, to public testimony. Before we begin, I remind members of the public that it is a formal government proceeding and that the quorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcript of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out a parent's card, which the Sergeant-at-Arms will give you, and wait for your name to be called. Once you have been recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic of school-based health centers and school-based mental health clinics. If you have a written testimony or additional statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of the, of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. I now call the first panel, which will include a youth from Generation Citizen. Thank you for being here. Now you can come forward. Thank you. I'm gonna start calling the names that registered. Christina Karasah, I hope I said it right. You can correct me when you come up. Stephen Baumgarten is a teacher. Okay. Jocelyn Kinsella is a student. Fatimata Barry, student. Samantha Jimenez. Thank you. I hope I didn't butcher. If I butcher name, you want to make correction, you may do so. Thank you. Now, we can begin from the. Oh, oh, the T, sorry. You look so young, sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Karahisaridis. It is a long one. I'm a program manager at Generation Citizen at our Mid-Atlantic region. But before joining Generation Citizen, I was actually a high school English teacher in the New York City DOE for seven years. So it is an absolute honor to be here today alongside an educator, inspiring educators also with us, and these hugely inspiring students and our changemakers. First and foremost, thank you Chair Joseph and the City Council, City Council Education Committee for your advocacy and commitment to maintaining New York City's education budget. And thank you for having us all at today's hearing. Generation Citizen is thankful for the council's $500,000 investment this year in our programming and our youth civics education. The City Council has generously funded this initiative for GC since 2017, when we originally meant to support our programming in 125 classrooms. But since then, we've actually doubled our programming. And we know that this is a very difficult fiscal year, but we hope to continue our trajectory of growth in New York City. And we are seeking an additional $100,000 for the next year to continue the expansion of civic education across the city. As I said before, in my previous role as a high school English education teacher, I served in Title I schools. And I saw firsthand that the detrimental effects that limited access to school-based mental health clinics and health centers has on our, on our young people. My students' emotional needs were often not met because they were not able to secure a meeting with their guidance counselor, who was overworked, overbooked, over everything. They had too many students on their caseload, and oftentimes, students relied on their classroom educators to provide that emotional support for them. But the issue with that is that classroom educators are not properly trained to handle these situations. We need to create more opportunities for our young people to get the care that they need while they are at school. Since working at Generation Citizen, it's been a privilege to see our young people advocate for themselves and each other through our Action Civics projects on topics such as this. Today, we are very thrilled to present the hard work of our partner, High School for Human, for Health Professions and Human Services. Our global history teacher is next to me, Stephen Baumgarten. And the ninth graders, Jocelyn Kinsella, Fatimata Barry, and Samantha Jimenez will share issues and concerns that emerged from their implementation of GC's curriculum. So I'm happy to turn it over to Stephen.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify here today. My name is Stephen Baumgarten. I'm a social studies teacher at the High School for Health Professions in Manhattan. It's my first year at the High School for Health Professions, but I worked the previous five years in District 29 in Queens at a middle school. And I've also worked for the past decade as a paramedic, both in New York City and throughout the state. So it's given me a bit of a unique perspective to see healthcare and mental health, both inside the schools and outside of schools. And I've noticed throughout my career, the fact that the lack of mental health services has negatively impacted our students. As a teacher, we serve to educate our students and help them grow to be well-rounded individuals that, so that they can become the changemakers of tomorrow. However, while we want what's best for our students and seek to support our students, student, teachers are not mental health clinicians. Similarly, while, while guidance counselors are present in schools, their role is often heavily skewed towards helping guide students academically. Not all students will need mental health support, but all students need academic support. Therefore, the few guidance counselors in our schools are not well enough equipped to handle the variety of mental health concerns for our students. Our schools are in desperate need of additional mental health services to support all of our students. Unfortunately, without mental health services in schools, students in crisis inside and outside of our buildings fall victim to a system that does not give them the healthcare they need to deal with mental health issues. Left without trained mental health clinicians in our school to address our students in crisis, students are left at the whims of our pre-hospital 911 system that often ends an emergency room visit, rather than providing them with the healthcare services they truly need. Further, the best way to prevent these crises are, is through preventative mental healthcare in our schools. Preventative healthcare is the best healthcare, and mental health clinics will do just that for our students. This year, my students and I have been working with Generation Citizen on an Action Civics project. For this project, my class discussed issues that impacted, impacted us within our community and build a consensus around one topic to address collectively. This project's been one of the most rewarding parts of my tenure, teaching, as students are not afraid to stand up and fight for the issues they think are important. My students decided to focus on mental healthcare. They chose this goal because it's an issue that affects them all. They know that when they use their voices collectively, they can use their collective power to change our communities. Our students are committed to the issue of mental health and ensuring that there are more mental health school-based clinics in our schools. We need more of these clinics because we need to support our students. And we know that by providing healthcare in our schools, our students are healthier. And when our students are healthier, they know, we know they learn better. We need to listen to our students because they know what they need for themselves when it comes to mental healthcare. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing. My name is Jocelyn, and I am a student at HPHS, also known as High School for Health Profession and Human Services. I have participated in an Action Civics project through Generation Citizens this year. I am testifying today because mental health is important to me as well as my classmates. We believe that there should be more school-based health centers and more school-based mental health clinics. Coming from a person that has been sent to several mental health clinics throughout the years, I am thankful for every single one of them and strongly believe that everyone should have the opportunity to have a healthy treatment to recover from mental health issues they can be suffering from. Furthermore, having support in schools can really impact a student's life. It can help them get better academically and emotionally. Sometimes, students won't show up for school due to mental health issues. So having this type of support in school can really help improve their attendance and emotional state, motivate them to be a better person overall, while also helping them emotionally. With this in mind, knowing how to handle social emotions is a life skill everyone should carry with them. Students in particular can benefit a lot from knowing how to handle social emotions. Some benefits could be a sense of safety and security, while also positive interaction with teachers and peers. From my experience with trying to cope with social emotions, it has been a challenging obstacle throughout my life. But knowing how to handle it set me up for success in ways I couldn't imagine. For example, I have been more stress-tolerant-free, and when school is overwhelming me, I know how to handle it in a healthier way. In addition, knowing how to handle social emotion keeps me at a stable balance with my moods and helps me manage impulsive behaviors, while also navigating me through healthy relationships with others. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at today's testimony about an issue that is important to me and my classmates. I hope hearing this testimony made you all more aware of issues regarding mental health.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing. My name is Fatimata Barry. I'm currently in the ninth grade at High School for Health Professions and Human Services, where I have been participating in a semester-long Action Civics project through Generation Citizen. For this project, my classmate, my class discussed issues that impact us within our community and built, and built consensus around one topic to address collectively. After much debate, we decided to focus on the role that mental health and drug abuse plays with homelessness and to set a goal to enlighten the people who do not consider this problem and how it is affecting the new generation. We think men, mental health services are important to our goal because it is something that affect kids all over the world, and it has not been getting better but worse because of the new substances such as street drugs, prescribed drugs that have been mixed with other drugs that have been made and that are, that is getting into the hands of kids who might be struggling with mental health. I am testifying today because all over the world, mental health strikes middle and high schoolers. Since middle school, I have seen how my classmates can go from being okayed and going through something that is hard and start to develop mental health issues. This may then lead to them being introduced to legal or illegal substances. That leads them to stop doing work, changes their ways, do things they never did. Then even after that, the trauma they went through isn't gone, but they have already been used to the substance they are taking, which ends up impacting them the hard way. It includes not going to school, hanging around with people who they are, hanging around with people who are also addicted to substances, cutting ties with their family, and then becoming one of the homeless living on the trains with the street. It can be as something as small as a family death and not knowing the right way to take care of their grief that can turn someone into a homeless high schooler on the street. My input on this is that the drug, the substance, the alcohol that are being made, that are legal, should not be in the hands of kids whose brains have not been developed. It should not be in the hands of grieving kids. The companies should look deeper first to whom they are giving these substances to sell, because the problem is not the kids, but how easy it is to access it as a kid. The rules and regulations are not being upheld by the sellers, which leads to so many kids losing their original perspective. As I wrap up my testimony, I would like to end by saying that there needs to be more services in schools such as drug experts or people who are very familiar with the problem to come talk with students. They could let us students know what these drugs and substances are, explain to us what these drugs contain, and show students how, and show students who have mental health problems and are considering drugs, that there are better ways to cope. Thank you for the opportunity to, to submit this testimony about an issue that is important to me and my classmates and you too.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to testify at today's hearing. My name is Samantha Jimenez, and I'm currently a freshman at the High School for Health Professions and Human Services, where I've been participating in a semester-long Action Civics project through Generation Citizen. Throughout this project, my class and I discussed issues that have impacted our lives in the communities we live in. Eventually, we built a consensus around a topic we can all address collectively, which was mental health and the services provided. The goal we came up with was to improve how accessible and impactful they are to students like myself. I'm testifying today because I myself have struggled with my own mental health in the past. When my mental health was at a low point, I never thought it would make an impact on my everyday life, which is why I never really considered reaching out for help. Despite that, my school never really promoted mental health support. Guidance counselors were often viewed as academic pinpoints to check on how you're doing in your classes and how you're maintaining your grades, but never as a person to talk to. At one point, I saw my, my grades begin to drop, and I stopped doing the things I enjoyed the most. My mind was filled with negative thoughts, not knowing how to cope. I decided help was necessary. My first talk with my guidance counselor, I was given the same advice I've heard for the longest time. Don't let it get to you, people love you, they care about you, you'll get over it. It made me feel like my feelings weren't valid. The activities they made me do made me feel like I was a toddler throwing a tantrum. Coloring books, affirmation, fidget toys, and journaling was all I was given. The activities they would give me never really seemed to help. I struggled all throughout middle school. However, I'm happy to say that my mental health has gotten better, but I feel like the support I got from the school. the support I got from the school never really made an impact. Our project relates to this committee since the decisions you're taking today will not only impact students' mental health, but also their day-to-day lives. There are tons of other students who have also struggled with their mental health, letting it affect their education and, in some cases, leading to bad habits and addictions. Mental health is something everyone deals with. What matters is getting the necessary help you need. Through Generation Citizen, my class and I believed it's best that more awareness is raised about mental health support throughout NYC schools and more impactful activities are done with students who have reached out for help. The New York City Council needs to hear about this issue since the ignorance of mental health can lead to future drug abuse, crimes, and violence. You're not only helping the people of today with your decisions, but the leaders of tomorrow.
I am so appreciative of you young folks coming here. I appreciate you, teachers, the leaders in the school, but having young folks coming here. I know Rita probably having a party right now. As a teacher, me as a nurse and a mom of four, I am so appreciative for young folks that come out and be a leader and explaining and telling us what's going on. I hear you. I'm with you. I see you. And having testimony like you taking the courage, I'm not dismissing you, but I'm so excited for you to be here and talking to us. And I don't know how to say the courage you have, the leadership in you. I can see you where I'm sitting eventually, you know, addressing and helping make the city a better place for all of us. So I thank you. I thank you, and we hear you. I think I have a question for you. Do you find that when you were, I think you mentioned something about like folks that are not being addressed, like they turn to, you know, to things in a way to make them feel better, like drug different things? So do you find there's a rise in that kind of things around you? Because since we have so many, I know Gail Brewer would love to be here to talk about it, but do you find an increase due to all the smoke shop we have around us?
Yeah, I do feel like it's becoming more higher because there are more smoke shops being made, and those smoke shops, the sellers are just sending to anyone, not following the rules and regulations to who should get those substances.
I have some young folks in my lives all the time because I need to hear from you. Because if you're not telling us, we don't know. Because I have learned that I have to sit and listen to you because if we want to make the changes for the next generation to come. So what can I say? I appreciate your leadership. So I want to turn it, I think Chair Lee first because of, I guess, his mental health.
Yeah, sure.
So I was gonna say thank you, but I think I am so, so happy that you're here. Thank you.
No, I just wanted to say thank you as well for sharing your testimony. And also, what I wanted to share is that we have a mental health roadmap that we came up with on the city council. We had a few phases that we came up with already along the way, and the next stop of the roadmap that we want to focus on this year, one of those stops is actually youth. So we are going to start conducting roundtable conversations coming up. And so, you know, would love to have some of your students and to have you guys come and express your thoughts and ideas. Okay, don't look scared.
You're a leader. I'm telling you. You come to us, we need you.
No, but we need your voices at the table, especially if we're talking about youth mental health, and I think that's a big issue. The substance use issue is huge. We're supposed to be getting a lot of opioid money that's supposed to be going to the community. We don't know yet if that's happening, so we'll try to get more data on that. But I appreciate you saying that because, you know, myself also and a lot of my friends, growing up in different, you know, immigrant communities, you know, we couldn't feel, we didn't feel like we could talk about mental health. It wasn't a thing. And one of the reasons why I'm very adamant about this issue is because I have very close family and friends with severe mental illness, and no one talks about it in our family. So I just really am so appreciative that you all came here today to share your testimony. So thank you.
And I want to say thank you again to the leadership that bring them because, you know, I know you get encouragement somewhere. So I want to say thank you for everyone. I have to pass it on to the Chair of Education that excited to talk to you.
Of course. Every time young people show up to advocate for themselves, it's a win-win. So thank you for being here, but I have two questions. What's the process for requesting mental health services at your school, and what's the average length of time that it takes to connect you with someone if no one is immediately available?
Sorry. For our school, well, personally, me going to my counselor, it's like one day, like I could request to go to her and I'll go to her. Like, for me, it's not long, but I do know kids whose, like, chances aren't that big. They have to wait, like, on the line because there's mostly a lot of kids who are struggling these days. So, yeah.
So the case loads a lot. We know that. Fatimata, this question is for you. Have you heard of Sappis? Do you have Sappis counselors at your school? They're supposed to be counselors helping with drugs, Sappis workers.
Uh, no, I haven't heard about those.
Have anyone provided lessons in the classrooms about drugs?
Yeah, in health class, we do talk about drugs. That's when I learned more about the drugs and said I should talk about this.
But no Sappis workers? We'll talk offline. Thank you so much for being here, young people. I love the fact that you're here. Yes, I'm having a party because you're here to advocate for yourself. Thank you. And LTW, I see you on the top. I see you and I hear you.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you. Keep on coming, keep on knocking the doors, keep on talking, and be vocal about things that you see, and you can make New York City the greatest city ever lived. We're still the greatest city, but you can make it even greater. Thank you. Thank you. We're not perfect, but we're still a great city. Cassie, the next, Cassie Stark? Fiona O'Grady? Like I say, you can correct me if I butcher name. Kumari Cruz? Anya Lisa Etienne? That one I would not say wrong. If I do that, my grandmother would beat me up.
You can begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairs Lee, Narcisse, and Joseph for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Casey Starr, and I'm the co-executive director of Samaritans, New York City's only community-based organization solely devoted to suicide prevention. I'm gonna go off script a little bit from my prepared statement. The first is just to address the teen space conversation that you had. You asked a question about actual use and engagement. It wasn't responded to, so I think it's really important to follow up with what are the levels?
Begin, yeah? So give me one second. All young folks that was in the room, I appreciate you that we came out. Thank you. You're gonna make that city even greater than what it is now. All right? Thank you for your time.
Apologies.
Yeah.
So getting clarity about what are the actual contracted levels of service, there must be something in place. And so, what's the actual engagement? What are they, what's the money going for? What are the levels of service? And how are they measuring efficacy is really important with a contract like that. The other thing is, Councilmember Lee started with talking about how 50% of all lifetime mental illness happens before or by age 14, 75% by age 24. So there's perhaps no more of an important time in someone's life to receive mental healthcare support than in schools. And we know that if you look at a graph of youth emergency department visits for mental health emergencies, there's a clear trend, and it looks like a use. If you start at January, it's high. When you get to the summer months, it drops almost down to nothing, and as soon as we're coming back into school, it's high again. We know that most youth suicides occur in the home after school, not during the summer, not on the weekends. And 83% of adolescents say that school is a significant point of stress. So to not be prioritizing those mental health clinics, that social-emotional learning is a significant problem in looking at how the DOE and the Department of Health is considering what to do. Suicide prevention efforts cannot be reactionary. They have to be embedded within our community structures, especially our schools, because that's where young people spend most of their time. We know that there's a negative impact of social media, and yet we're going after young people in that same exact platform where you have this place, school, where you can restrict that and actually connect. And so it seems like this isn't being given the appropriate attention. So that's my off-script statement.
You summarize it very nicely. Yeah, we need that. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and thank you, Chair Lee, Chair Joseph, who is not here, and of course, Chair Narcisse. My name is Fiona O'Grady, and I'm Director of Government Relations for Samaritans. We're a steadfast provider of suicide prevention services for over 40 years, and our 24-hour hotline is the cornerstone of this effort, offering the own, New York City's only anonymous and completely confidential crisis service to New Yorkers, which is different to 988 number, which says it's confidential, but only up to a point, which is another thing that we are discussing with you and that Casey speaks at the National Council. We are concerned. I'm here today to speak on the matter of critical importance, the city's urgent need to support the mental health of its youth, particularly among Black, Indigenous, and youth of color with intersecting marginalized identities. The need for Samaritan services, as well as school-based mental health clinics and social-emotional learning in schools, has never been more pressing. In New York City, suicide is the third-leading cause of death among young people aged 15 to 24. 20% of deaths in children aged 10 to 14 are due to suicide, CDC 2023. I have put in a handout from the Samaritans which has the statistics, and for our high school youth who have seriously considered suicide. In 2021, the latest statistics, we're looking at 15.6% of our New York City high school students are saying that they are seriously, they have seriously considered suicide in the year prior to the survey. And then amongst Hispanic females, it's 22.8%. Amongst Asians, 18.4% for females, and African Americans, 19.6% for females. And we applaud the mental health clinics and also the social-emotional learning and school-based mental health clinics and the implementation of that legislation can make and will make a real difference, equipping students who may otherwise not engage with services with important coping skills, arguably the most important lessons that they can learn in school.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairs Lee, Narcisse, and Joseph. My name is Kumari Cruz. I oversee the education and bereavement services over at the Samaritans of New York. In my role, I see on a daily basis the profound impact mental health challenges have on the youth and marginalized communities where mental health concerns are disproportionately high. Our services are designed to address those urgent needs. We work together with the community on a daily basis to address them as needed. Our 24-hour suicide prevention hotline is a critical component of our approach, providing immediate support to those in distress. The necessity of the service continues to grow, as reflected in the troubling statistics. We heard of them rising tremendously within the past years. Let's see. When we have a counselor to student ratio of 1 to 325, that leaves a lot of student without adequate support. The supporting staff struggles to manage that workload. That imbalance underscores the pressing need for additional resources. As my colleague mentioned, suicide prevention is not one size fits all. Some students seek out help from family members, friends, but those who don't have that support, having SEL in schools might be the only thing they are able to access to manage their struggles. It's sometimes the only time where they hear that it's okay to not be okay, and that seeking out help is a strength and not a weakness. By supporting SEL, we ensure that every student not only learn how to recognize, but also to manage their emotions more effectively and to build stronger interpersonal skills. These are not just abstract ideas, they are skills that can help save lives. We strongly believe that this is what should be taught in schools. Our support for school-based mental health clinics align with these goals by continuing to remove barriers to those access. Samaritan's education programs, as I mentioned earlier, are uniquely designed to address those needs for the students. We not only provide vital information and support, but also work with the DOE administrators and staff to help to identify what those needs are and how we can best assist young people in overcoming their challenges. This proactive approach ensures that we are effectively meeting the people where they're at and keeping pace with the reality of ever-evolving needs. I urge the city council members to recognize the critical importance of these initiatives, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Chair Joseph, Chair Lee, Chair Narcisse, Chair Schulman, and the honorable members of the New York City Council, good afternoon. Thank you for convening this hearing on resources schools can provide for our young people. My name is Anya Lisa Etienne, Deputy Director of Social-Emotional Learning at the Urban Assembly. The Urban Assembly supports public schools through innovative programs to build cohesive learning communities for our young people, primarily through our network of 22 public schools across the city, as well as at over 45 schools in partnership with the DOE. I'm here to voice strong support for Resolution 0013 to designate the Second Friday in March annually as Social-Emotional Learning Day in New York City. SEL is a critical component of how we prepare our young people to become successful, empathetic, and responsible adults. The New York State Education Department has noted that SEL enhances academic performance, improves attitudes towards learning, and reduces classroom disruptions. New York City has made significant investments in SEL with initiatives like Strong Resilient NYC implemented across all NYC public schools by the Urban Assembly. SEL has measurable economic implications as well. The Center of Benefit-Cost Studies of Education at Teachers College found that every dollar invested in SEL programs yields an $11 return. At UA schools, where SEL is a priority, the graduation rate outpaces the city by 6%. 10% for Black students, 8% for Hispanic students, 5% for English language learners, and 18% for students with disabilities. President Biden and Governor Hochul have both highlighted SEL's importance in our schools and communities. The UA is grateful for the support of Chair Joseph and the, excuse me, and the over 20 councilmembers cosponsoring Resolution 0013. By supporting this resolution, the New York City Council will lead by example, sending a clear message that New York values the holistic development of its students, understands the profound benefits of SEL, and is committed to nurturing environments that enhance these vital skills. I urge the council to pass this resolution, and thank you for your consideration and for your commitment to the educational and emotional well-being of our next generation.
Thank you. With our new arrivals, I know it's, they've been through, I think Chair Joseph mentioning, they've been through so much, more than ever that we recognize their needs and the importance of addressing mental health. And being a registered nurse for all this time, having Chair Lee here, having Joseph for education, you know, we all enter it to make sure because we recognize and we know for a fact that mental health, if you're not addressing the physical health, nothing is being addressed. So I thank you for your So I thank you for your testimony, and we're looking forward to address it in a way that never been addressed before, especially where, in the community where it's taboo, like the Black community, Latinos community, and I find out other community had issue dealing with mental health and admitting that someone have a mental health issue. So thank you. Thank you so much for holding us accountable and coming here and testify to make sure we do what we're supposed to do. We're gonna do what we're supposed to do, but having you telling us is a great thing. Having taken your time, we appreciate it. Chair Joseph, any question?
I'll just thank you for uplifting this work, and thank you for the data, and we will continue conversation. Thank you so much.
Chair Lee?
We love you guys.
All right. So thank you for your time. Next panel, Alice, Alice Buffkin? Dorana Ven? What is that? Matt? Erin Lawson? Roger? Is that Platt?
Platt.
Platt? MD? And thank you, young folks out in the back, thank you for coming out. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Keep on coming, keep on pushing. Who's that? Oh, okay. So now, when I call your name, let me know you're here. Roger? Roger? Thank you. I know Roger. Yes. Now I see who's there. Okay. Erin Lawson? Nope. Naftari Moore? Alice? Thank you, thank you. So we come, we're starting with Dr., which is, Dr. Platt? Dr. Platt. We're starting with you.
Thank you very much. My name is Dr. Roger Platt, and I was Director of the Office of School Health from 2003 until 2021. While I currently serve on the Board of the Community Healthcare Network, I am here representing myself. I'd like to recommend that New York City supported school-based health centers by providing the funding needed for these centers to consider, to continue to serve New York students. This support is required because other sources of funding for SBHCs, notably Medicaid, are not increasing, and the number of students without health insurance, including the growing immigrant population, is rising. Furthermore, the cost of staffing SBHCs is rising rapidly because of the dramatic shortage of nurses and the increased costs for both nurse practitioners and staff nurses. During my tenure, tenure as Director of School Health, with an increase in city funding, we were able to open over forty new school-based centers. In addition to operating funds, New York City invested about eighty million dollars in the construction of these new facilities. We focused on high school sites because they were larger and because adolescents are much less likely to visit physicians regularly. Targeting high school buildings also let us provide reproductive health services to students, and it contributed to the rapid decline in teen pregnancies and births over the last two decades in New York. The new SBHCs also provided much-needed mental health services. Expanding city support for school-based health centers and assuring that the current sites remain open will not have much impact on city tax levy, because in most cases, the presence of a health center relieves New York City of the need to provide a school nurse. With the increased reliance on contract nurses, I estimate that New York City direct and indirect nursing costs are approaching a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per site. In addition, school nurse costs do not receive a state Article VI match, while city funds given to health centers do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Naftali Moore, and I'm a staff attorney on the School Justice Project at Advocates for Children of New York. AFC's work with families, as well as data, shows that far too many students are not able to access the mental health support they need. At AFC, we hear from many families of students struggling with mental health crises, whose children are sent to the hospital or removed or suspended from the school instead of receiving the mental health support they need to remain in the school community. Too often, schools lack their appropriate resources, train staff, and clinics, and rely heavily on punitive exclusionary discipline and policing. In fact, during the 2022-2023 school year, the NYPD reported two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight child-in-crisis interventions in which a student displayed signs of emotional distress and was removed from the school by police and was sent to the hospital for a psychological evaluation. This represents an eighteen-point-nine increase from the prior school year. New York City Public Schools reported removing and suspending students thirty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-two times, representing an increase from the prior school year. While we should be focusing on the need to increase the number of school-based mental health clinics and other programs to help address the mental health needs of students, instead, we are facing the potential loss of important mental health supports in schools within the next few months. As a key example, the City Council was instrumental in securing five million for the Mental Health Continuum across agency partnership between New York Public Schools, Health and Hospitals, and the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to help students with significant mental health needs access expedited mental health care and to keep students in school. This model is being rolled out at fifty high-need schools in the South Bronx and Central Brooklyn through support such as partnerships with the mental health clinics, timely access to mental health services, and a New York City Well Hotline to advise school staff, mobile response teams to respond to students in crisis, and training for staff. Unfortunately, the funding for the Mental Health Continuum expires in June, and although this model was highlighted in the mayor's mental health plan, the preliminary budget does not include any funding to continue it. In addition, expiring federal stimulus funds are currently funding a range of supports, including four-hundred-and-fifty school social workers and restorative justice programs. And there is yet not a plan to sustain these investments. We thank the City Council for calling on the administration to restore the funding for the Mental Health Continuum, social workers, and restorative justice programs, among other educational programs in your budget response. We are hopeful that today's announcement by the mayor's means that the mayor's executive budget will include funding for the Mental Health Continuum. We look forward to working with you to ensure that the budget includes and baselines funding for the Mental Health Continuum, as well as the range of important educational programs currently funded, funded with the expiring dollars. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony. My name is Alice Buffkin. I am the Associate Executive Director of Policy at Citizens Committee for Children. I'm going to focus my testimony on school-based mental health clinics. School-based mental health clinics have the advantage of pulling down state and federal dollars because of their primary funding source is Medicaid reimbursement, which makes them incredibly cost-effective for the city. However, the same funding is also the root of many of the fiscal challenges clinics face. Unfortunately, these clinics are only able to recoup a fraction of the total cost of care from third-party payers. This is a result of two main factors. One, current reimbursement rates remain far too low and do not match the cost of care; and two, many of the vital populations clinics serve and the services they offer are not reimbursable, and therefore clinics take a financial loss when they provide this care. Key non-reimbursable scenarios include services provided to the student who doesn't have any form of health insurance, as well as services to students without a diagnosis. Additionally, some of the most vital services clinics can offer, such as workshops and trainings for school staff, de-escalation to prevent hospitalization or 911 involvement, case management, referrals, parent outreach, are largely not reimbursable. As a result, clinics are only able to make ends meet through philanthropy or by partnering with another school program such as community schools. This is not a sustainable model, and it's contributing to closures of these vital clinics. We'd like to highlight several steps the city can take to strengthen access to school-based mental health clinics. First, provide wraparound city funding to all existing school-based mental health clinics to help finance, to help finance services that are not billable. We believe seventy-five thousand dollars per clinic will enable clinics to offer a more comprehensive and inclusive array of services and help ensure their financial stability. We recommend the city begin with fifty clinics and eventually expand to all clinics in the city. Second, we urge you to protect and expand community schools. School-based mental health clinics are frequently partnered with community schools, and they're crucial in helping many clinics remain financially viable. Unfortunately, as you know, funding for community schools is threatened in the city budget every year. We know many of your champions of community schools. We therefore urge city leaders to protect funding in the fiscal year twenty-five budget, including fifty-five million in expiring federal funds, eight million in November pegs, and fourteen million in one-time city funds. Third, we urge the City Council and administration to advocate with the state leaders to enhance Medicaid behavioral health outpatient reimbursement rates. And fourth, there are, there's currently a, last year, there was an implementation of something that would require commercial insurers and school-based mental health clinics to pay the same rate as Medicaid, whereas currently, as I know Councilmember Lee said, they deeply underpay through commercial insurance. But what we are hearing is that is not being implemented due to a variety of operational administrative issues, so we'd love a partnership with the city and the state to address that and actually get those fees back up. Thank you so much.
Alice, you don't have to convince me, because I had my razor in to increase Medicaid, and being a nurse and listening to all the hospital and the clinics is very difficult, and me being in business of with Medicaid, Medicaid and Medicare is always, but my Medicaid to increase the reimbursement, the state need to do that in order to provide the care, because it's way under. And I do believe in preventive care, and if we don't invest in preventive care, we're not being wise at all, because when you, when you have to do preventive care and curing, curing is much more. If you want to be cost-effective, in the long run, it has to be preventive care. And definitely, we under reimbursement rate, and we have so many clinics closing because it's not sustainable for them. They provide the care and they cannot get paid. We know that. And us, right here, we trying our very best, and I'm so happy that the mayor got it when it comes to mental health, especially for our youth. I have great concern with new arrivals, because they never, they never have really good access to healthcare, and we have to provide the best care, because after all, we have to do our very best, because if you don't pay in the front, we're gonna pay much more in the end. And so is for sickle cell disease, too, because people are coming from West Africa, from Haiti, so they have a lot of folks that never been diagnosed properly. So if we don't do the right thing upfront, we're gonna, it's gonna cost us more. So thank you. We got it. And as a teacher, and Linda, you have any question?
No, I just wanted to say, thanks for bringing up the point about the diagnosis, because so far with the, because with Article Thirty-ones, you need three assessments, intakes, and then you can get the diagnosis in order to be seen. You can't do any group therapy unless each individual person goes through that diagnosis, so that's a follow-up question that we're gonna ask DOHMH in terms of the school setting, how that changes what types of services they provide. So thanks for bringing that up. And then the private insurance, yes, we gotta get on that, I want to follow up on that one.
And if I'm hearing correctly, that we have to keep those centers open in the, in the school, too, as well as, you know, providing the early, I mean, what the best way to get the young folks? When you're in the school building, when in different places where they come, and all, everyone across the board. Being a nurse for three decades, I have learned that. We have to spend in preventive care than curing. And I see some people in here that's advocating for sickle cell disease that have been a problem. Like I said, I'm gonna keep on pushing for that, too, because it's gonna be very costly if we don't kind of like treat people early, talk about the disease they're facing. So thank you for your time. Chair Lee, I mean, I said Chair Lee. Chair Joseph?
No, just wanted to say thank you. We're already on the same page. Matter of fact, there's a town hall tonight on the Emergency Education Coalition to talk about what's on the chopping block for communities. Thank you.
We cannot chop-chop. We have to look at what makes sense. Health is very, very important. It's unfortunate, a lot of us don't talk about health until it's late, and we don't want to do that. We have to be, it has to be cost-effective, and we have to focus on preventive care. So thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Next panel is Erin Verney. Michael Fagan. Linda?
Carmine?
Which one?
Sorry.
Oh, Linda Carmine. Edward Mikkaby? Mikkaby. Mickabe or Mikkaby? I can't say Mikkaby or Mikkaby. You can, you can correct that for me. Who's, oh, sorry. Erin? Who's Erin?
Me.
Oh, so, oh, we didn't see that in order, so I was trying to make it like the way I called it, but apparently it's not that way. So therefore, I start from beginning here, so we start from the beginning again. I thought you were in the same lineup. Yeah. Okay. To make it smooth, so nobody looks at each other, so we start from here to there. How about that? Okay. And the name?
David Appel.
David. Okay. David Appel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the committee chairs and members of New York City Council's various committees for the opportunity to present testimony on school-based health centers. My name is David Appel, and I was the Director of the Montfier School Health Program from 1993 to 2018. My career as a pediatrician focused on providing care to children living in underserved areas of New York City. The seed for my passion in school-based health centers originated at our kitchen table when I was growing up. My mother was a dedicated school nurse and regularly talked about her challenges caring for a group of children that came down to her office many, many times with a vague stomachache or headache that she knew was due to strife at home or with other children. "If only I had a social worker to team up with," she lamented, "I would have been able to better address underlying issues that were not part, that were not of a physical nature." She was also frustrated that as an RN, she was not licensed to look in the ears of children with earaches or do throat cultures for complaints of a sore throat. The children she, she was most concerned about in our small town came from poor families that could ill afford the upfront costs of a private doctor's visit, the only option at that time. I never forgot that lesson and have had a rewarding career in New York City, practicing in what I found to be a very powerful model: full-service school-based health centers that integrate medical and mental health care in a location convenient to children, specifically reaching children not getting care anywhere else. New York State DOH did an analysis of well-child visits for children with Medicaid. A twenty-percent increase in the proportion of children with a well-child visit was seen for those enrolled in both school-based health center and community primary care services. That data demonstrates that the children seen in school-based health centers, even with Medicaid, were a different group than seen in community settings. Children without insurance and newly migrated children add to the group of children that would be without basic care without school-based health centers. School-based health centers are also very effective. For children with asthma, a fifty-percent reduction in hospitalization, fifty-percent reduction ER use, and a three-day reduction in absences was seen and published. Effective contraceptive use among school-based health center patients was three-point-eight times higher than patients that were not able to access school-based health centers. This was estimated over a three-year period to avert thirty-five-hundred pregnancies.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'm Michael Fagan, Chief of External Affairs in Government. Thank you. Thank you Chair Narcisse, Joseph, and Lee for the opportunity to testify. I am Michael Fagan, Chief of External and Government Affairs at Ryan Health. Ryan Health is a mission-driven, federally qualified health center with seventeen locations located throughout Manhattan, stretching from Washington Heights to the Lower East Side. In conjunction with Ryan Chelsea Clinton, our affiliated center in Health Kitchen, we operate seven school-based health centers throughout Manhattan. We are a full-service health center in the schools, mitigating barriers to healthcare access. Each of our centers is staffed by a school nurse practitioner and a licensed practical nurse. In addition, we have licensed clinical social workers that work at each of our centers. At our largest center at Park West Campus, the LCSW is full-time, and at smaller centers, the LCSW split their time between centers serving as a halftime FTE. By way of example about the importance of discovering mental health issues when individuals come in presenting with a medical issue, we had a fifteen-year-old student came into the center at the beginning of the school year. of the school year for pain due to menstruation cramps. As a new patient, the nurse practitioner conducted annual mental health and high-risk screenings. Those screenings revealed that she was living with depression and suicidal ideation that otherwise were unknown. That medical staff referred her to the LCSW, and this student has been receiving weekly therapy from that provider. If our SBHC had not been in the school, it raises serious doubts about whether this young person would have received the care that she needed and deserved and what the alternatives might have been. Ryan Health, as I said, uh, uh, Ryan Health operates our seven SBHCs as a loss. In 2023, we lost 2.2 million from operations at, at the centers. Our operating cost for the centers is approximately 3.1 million. We undertake the work because of our mission to make quality healthcare accessible to vulnerable New Yorkers. With my other colleagues up here today, we are advocating for baseline fund, funding to prevent further service reductions and closures. We propose a baseline funding model of 100,000 per school campus for all New York City SBHCs, plus 100 per student in the school. I invite any of you to come and visit one of our SBHCs, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hi. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Linda Carmine. I'm a, a attending pediatrician and associate professor at Northwell Cohen Children's Medical Center. I'm the director of the Cohen Children's School-Based Health Center Program. Um, the COVID pandemic exacerbated the inequities in our healthcare system, um, and education system, with adolescents clearly traumatized by the social, um, isolation and educational deprivation associated with the pandemic. Meanwhile, our school-based health centers struggle to function in a healthcare system that underfunds the essential medical and mental health services our young people desperately need. Current grant funding and Medicaid revenue for mental health services do not come close to supporting the expense of the services. With the support of Northwell, our sponsoring institution, we provide medical reproductive health, mental health, and health education services at no charge to our students, including full laboratory testing, a medical dispensary, and all vaccinations. Our school-based health centers located throughout Queens on New York City DOE campuses serve many new undocumented immigrants who have had traumatic voyages to our country and receive inadequate services on their arrival. One school-based health center has documented eight to 12 new immigrants arriving each week, um, up from three to four last year. Many arrive with complex healthcare needs, unable to secure care with a primary care provider. The school-based health center fills many gaps in care for these students, including the six months of catch-up vaccines required for school attendance. Many students also suffer significant trauma from social and health inequities that exist within their communities, leading to skyrocketing levels of self-harm, suicidality, and school phobia, um, at its, which are all at their highest levels in decades, resulting in absenteeism in schools. Crisis intervention needs have reached staggering rates, uh, students experiencing panic attacks, emotional and physical dysregulation, arguments that quickly become physical. The school-based health center offers a safe haven within the school with wraparound care between medical and mental health providers. Learning skills in real time to manage emotions and navigate stressful situations is essential, and when provided in schools is confidential and de-stigmatizing. We request funding for all New York City school-based health centers to prevent further service reductions and closures. We propose a funding model, the same just mentioned, of $100,000 per school campus, plus $100 per student enrolled in the schools, which is less than what New York City pays for a school nurse. We call on the New York City Council to endorse the financial stability of school-based health centers throughout the city. We express gratitude to the New York City Council for their dedicated backing of the most underserved families and communities in New York. I would like to thank the committee chairs and the members of the New York City Council, various committees, for the opportunity to submit this testimony on school-based health centers.
Okay. Um, hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Erin Verrier, and I'm the manager of Policy and External Affairs for Community Healthcare Network, otherwise known as CHN. CHN is a federally qualified health center with 14 sites citywide, including two school-based health centers and our Crown Heights Health Center, um, which you represent, Councilmember Joseph. We provide critical primary care for patients regardless of their ability to pay. Our school-based health centers, one at Seward Park High School Campus on the Lower East Side, and the other at Community Health Academy of the Heights in Washington Heights, serve over 2,300 students in grade six through 12. Beyond what a school nurse can do, our SBHCs provide a full range of primary care services from physicals to vaccinations, nutrition services, sexual and reproductive health services, and more, including what I would like to emphasize today, which is our mental health services. In addition to a shared psychiatrist across both sites, each of our school-based health centers have a full-time mental health counselor five days per week. For Washington Heights alone, the counselor's schedule is packed, seeing up to seven students per day, in addition to meeting weekly with school social workers and interfacing with teachers and administrators in the process, all of whom are grateful their students can access mental health support without needing to leave the building. We seamlessly integrate students' physical and mental health. That's what we call primary care at CHN, and we want to ensure our services as a school-based health center continue. The work we do aligns with the city's mental health roadmap and its focus on youth, and we request the city support the impactful role we play for youth mental health screening and treatment, all of which take place within a safe, trusted, and familiar school community. So, thank you for the opportunity to present. Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Ed McCabe, and I'm the Director of Adolescent and Young Adult Health at Staten Island University Hospital, Northwell Health. It's an honor to speak to you today. School-based clinics exist at the intersection of education and healthcare and are the clock that prevents young people from falling through the cracks. They provide care without concern for the student's ability to pay, and in a location that meets students where they're at, in school. These services are delivered without the barriers that young people and their families too often face, all without missing a day of school or a day of work for their caregivers. We provide physical exams, immunization updates, reproductive healthcare, mental health services, lab testing, acute or walk-in care, health education, and first aid. We go to medical emergencies in the building or in the fields, and we stabilize medically and mentally unstable students prior to their EMS call. School-based health centers give young people the opportunity to manage their healthcare and increase their health literacy. School-based clinics reduce ER and urgent care visits and lower hospitalization rates. School-based health clinics have positively been associated with improved school attendance, improved school performance, and higher graduation rates. We opened the School Health Center at New Dorp, my alma mater, in 1990. Since then, we've hosted over 100,000 visits. The School Health and Wellness Center at Port Richmond High School opened in 2017. In 2022 to 2023, largely because of a marked increase of migrant families, Port Richmond High School saw an 18% school census increase from the previous year. There was no concomitant increase in funding to provide that care during that time. Uh, Port Richmond High School this past June boasted an 83% graduation rate, up from 59% when we opened in 2017. There's no doubt that students perform better when they show up for class healthy and are ready to learn. Regarding their patient experience, in 2023, 96.5% of our patients were satisfied or highly satisfied with our services, and 94.5% of our patients were likely or highly likely to recommend someone else to our services. Each of us testifying here today have similar and different tales about school-based health centers to tell, but we are united in asking for your support in adopting a more dynamic and equitable funding model for school-based clinics of every size in New York City. A baseline of $100,000 per school campus, plus $100 per student enrolled in the school. Thank you again for the opportunity, and we look forward to continuing to partner with you to provide these vital services.
Thank you. And, um, I support school-based because you get the, the young folks that don't want to go to the doctor easily to access it. But I would like to see more in term of reaching them where they at, in term of promoting, because literature giving them the, some of them will get it, but if we can get the social media things going on within the school building, um, trying to get some, the leadership of the organization within the school, because you have some leaders, because we had some testifying here. So I think we can reach out and making sure that they doing that preventive care they need to do. So I thank you for testifying, and I believe in it too. So, thank you. And, um, okay, Chair Lee, okay, have a-
Quick question. Um, so the $3.1 million operating cost, how many centers is that?
Uh, that was, uh, 3.1 million for seven centers.
Okay. About 442,000, 3,000. Um, so where are you, so just out of curiosity, um, well, how, what's a breakdown of staffing for those centers? And then also for the baseline 100,000 per site that you guys are both proposing, um, what were you thinking of in terms of the staffing for that as well?
I can give you the breakdown on our staffing. We have, um, overall, we have seven nurse practitioners plus a nurse practitioner director for the program. We have four LCSWs plus an LCSW supervisor. Um, one, uh, is being recruited, and we have two social work interns. And the funding that we're requesting would be used to stabilize the finances of the, um, of the school-based health centers and allow us to expand services and bring on, for example, even more LCSWs. Cause some of our LCSWs are spread over a couple of schools, so they're air at a school halftime.
Uh, at the Montefiore School Health Programs, uh, where I worked, and now there are 32 clinics, um, some are recovering from COVID, but the staffing model is one medical provider per thousand students. A large high school have two medical providers, either physicians and nurse practitioners, what, uh, one licensed practical nurse for every medical provider, and a senior clerk at the front desk as a receptionist. Uh, a mental provider that's either a licensed clinical social worker or psychologist. In the clinics of up to 1,000, it's one. Um, the high, large high schools are two. We also have a preventive dentistry program with part-time dentists, and recently a vision program with an optometrist does vision screening and provides glasses in cooper, for free in cooperation with Orby Parker.
Oh, nice. But I'm guessing the 100,000 that you guys are proposing, that's for like a very, very scaled back, uh, staffing, right, per site? Cause if that's 100,000 per site that you're proposing, that's pretty low, I would say, depending on what the staffing structure would look like.
Well, 100,000 plus 100 per student, so it's proportional for the size of the school. The reason for formulating that way, that's a formula that, uh, City Health Department, Division of School Health uses when they were supporting some new clinics that they opened in the last 10 years.
Interesting. Okay.
It still won't be sufficient to fully-
Yeah, I was gonna say.
-fund what we do. And even with Medicaid revenue, which seems to be down a bit rather than up, the, um, costs are still greater than the funding streams, and the sponsoring institutions have to continue to support a lot of what we do. Um, but we're coming to ask for more money without asking you to complete the whole picture.
Yeah, no, cause I, I mean, the only reason why is because when I saw 3.1 million, that's why I was curious, because the governor's only proposing 20. So that can only mean there's X number more sites that can be provided. So that's why I was, okay, thank you.
And our footprint's a little bigger than that per school financially, so that's-
Okay.
Also, our sponsoring institutions are willing and do provide a lot of support, but it, it reaches a point-
Yep.
-where they can't sustain anymore. So we need to keep it within their comfort zone.
Yeah. Thank you. That's, that's, that's actually very helpful to understand the details of, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, if I could just add one thing. Um, in our, in our site here, uh, and at Staten Island, we're running at a deficit of around $100,000 per site.
Hmm.
Uh, and we're constantly, annually, for the last five to 10 years in the crosshairs of our administration, who are really seeing, you know, do we need to be in the school health business? So we have to find another way. We're doing everything we can to supplement, uh, mini grants here and there, but we're, we're not close. We've decreased it quite a bit. In 2019, we were running at like a $650,000 deficit, and we're down to about 200,000.
Right.
But there's nowhere else to go.
Yeah. No, and these are the services that we desperately need. So thank you all for the work you're doing.
Also, our visit volume, we, um, I don't know about your programs, but we've been seeing five to seven mental health visits a day, and depending on the season, 15 to 20 medical visits a day.
That was gonna be my question. You answered it for me.
Thank you.
How do you reach those young folks that come to the clinic?
We do a variety of things. We do, um, we have a video on in the school, uh, a lot, you know, showing them the availability of those services and the confidentiality of reproductive services in the age-appropriate schools. Um, we also do some tabling. We also do some giveaways and prizes, um, to engage them and work with the school administration to see what's, uh, most affected and needed.
Is that a way that we can do social media for them to get access to?
We have done some, uh, through our main, uh, social media site, our main Facebook, we have done some Facebook Lives on, uh, what we do in terms of school-based health.
Because what I'm hearing is just like not enough young folks in the school going to those clinics, to the centers.
We're pretty busy. Um, we're not having that problem, but we do, um, have a pregnancy prevention program funded by the state, and they're in the classrooms. And they're also out there with QR codes, um, where kids can download things, and they have made some TikToks and do advertising. So there's, health educators are, um, much better than doctors at some of the social media outreach and education. And there are main outreach arm, um, but even our, um, LPNs and medical assistants are in the schools talking about the clinic.
There, we're also doing catch-up because during COVID, for two years, students weren't in the school. So in the high schools, for example, 50% of the students are new to the building, and they don't even know that a school-based health center is there, uh, because those grades weren't there. They came for the first time. So it takes time for them to know about it. It takes time to catch up and get all the enrollment up, so all the kids know about it. So we've been very, every, programs have been very active in getting the new students and the families, new students, to know that the clinics are there and getting used to using them.
Is that a way we can, you can get, um, the teachers involved? Because if the teachers involved, because every, every young person that work, and especially the new arrivals, they need that support, and they don't know. So if we can get everybody in the building, if you can, you know, that's my suggestion and recommendation. It's just like, if we can get to even the, if they have the safety population, people like in the front desk and different places where we can get people in, the buy-in, to understand the importance of those young folks to have their health together, so they don't have to be out of school. That would be a good way.
Also, we have snacks.
Yes. The snacks will get them. They, they know food. I know I raised four. You know food, they're gonna be like, oh, yeah. All right. So thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, um, at our Washington Heights site, we are, well, both sites, we have a Teens Pack Program through CHN that does a lot of, um, health education and reproductive health. Um, there are signs all up over the school in Washington Heights that say period products are available, um, condoms are available, and we've done a good job there at cultivating a relationship with teachers so that they feel relieved by there being a school-based health center there, and they don't feel the pressure of needing to figure out their students', um, health supports. They can send them upstairs and have them seen there. Um, and so it's been a strong working relationship between the school administration and the teachers and the school-based health centers. And over the years, they've really been able to, to make a great relationship across them. So there's a lot of word getting out about it.
So all the centers have dental? No, not all of them?
There's a large space constraint when it comes to dental.
Because I heard, um-
So not all, but, um, I think, um, 44 ha, do have dental as well.
Okay. All right. And the vision need to be checked. Yeah. So thank you. Thank you so much for being. Yeah, so thank you, thank you so much for being. The next panel is Teresa Ginger Davis. I said Teresa Davis. Is that this I said? Yeah, Ginger, that's my Ginger, Ginger Davis. Yeah, I know. That's how I said Teresa, Ginger Davis. I we got to work together for sickle cell disease. The next is Rachel Evans. Rachel? Is that Rachel? Okay. Jack Dolgin. Jack? It seemed like we have everybody for that panel. Yeah. The next one is Kaitlin Garbo. Kaitlin? Is Adria Cruz? So we got everybody. Okay, well, they still not sitting in order, so we ask call first. I think it was Ginger. I'm gonna sit, I'm doing the same thing. Thank you for being here. I will start with Ms. Cruz. Is that Ms. Cruz? Yes, and then we'll go that way.
Yes, Adria Cruz. So you want me to start?
Yeah, yes, you can start. You may start.
All right, good afternoon. I'm Adria Cruz, a board member of the New York School Based Health Foundation. Thank you to the committee chairs and members for allowing me to testify on school based health centers, also known as SBHCs. SBHCs are key pillars of New York's health equity strategy, reaching marginalized populations, reducing absenteeism, preventing teen pregnancies, addressing youth mental health needs, and promoting primary and preventive care. Our five oh one C three foundation is committed to ensuring vulnerable school children access quality care via New York State School Based Health Centers. We promote, strengthen, and expand school based health centers access by offering technical assistance, data services, and raising awareness of their vital role as a safety net for our state's underserved families. In New York City, there are one hundred and thirty eight school based health centers, serving four hundred and thirty three schools and over one hundred and fifty thousand students, regardless of insurance or immigration status. Sponsored by eighteen healthcare organizations, including hospitals and community health centers, over ninety percent of students served residing COVID nineteen severely impacted neighborhoods, according to the Task Force on Racial Inclusion and Equity Tree. All SBHCs offer comprehensive medical and behavioral health services, many providing dental, vision, and health education at no cost to families. Because school based health centers never turn patients away, regardless of their insurance, billing only covers about fifty percent of school based health center operations, with the rest coming from various sources, including state and city health departments, as well as private funds raised by the sponsoring organizations. In New York City, certain schools are required to have a school nurse present. SBHCs assist New York City public schools in meeting this mandate. Yet, when an SBHC is established, New York City public schools remove the school nurse, relying on school based health centers to fulfill the health mandate without providing any funding for this responsibility. As a result, many SBHCs are financially fragile and others face service reductions. Implementing a funding model for NYC SBHCs would not only stabilize many of them, but also ensure their long term sustainability. We advocate for a funding model that includes providing a hundred thousand dollars per school campus, along with an additional one hundred dollars per enrolled student in the school. We urge the city council to prioritize funding to ensure NYC SBHCs remain vital components of the city's safety net, bridging healthcare gaps for vulnerable students. We thank the council for their support and commitment to caring for our most vulnerable New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you, next, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Narcisse and other chairs and joint members, joint committee members. My name is Caitlin Garbo and I'm here today on behalf of the National Alliance on Mental Illness of New York City, NAMI NYC. For over forty years, we've provided renowned peer and evidence based services led for and by individuals and families affected by mental illness across NYC, all free of charge. As you know, we have a mental health crisis among our youth. And decades of research and experience have laid a solid foundation and framework for effectively providing mental health services in schools that protects student well being, promote learning, reduce stigma, and improve access. But there are programs like NAMI NYC's Ending the Silence program, which has a unique aspect that we not only offer to students, but also to teachers and to family members, parents, and caregivers. So when we open the conversation around youth mental health and school based mental health, it's a really missed opportunity if we're not also prioritizing in this conversation the adults and the lives of students. Parents, teachers, and school staff are in that close ring of people that really see what's going on in the lives of students. They're supporting them and they can make or break the stigma and make or break those connections to resources. So I just want to emphasize that if we really want to affect the lives of young people, we need to make sure the adults in their lives have the language and have the resources to support them and make sure they need it, especially when they are at their most vulnerable. So, NAMI NYC has free programming that we're happy to bring into schools, including Ending the Silence. We also have specifically targeted programming for parents of youth under eighteen who are navigating their mental health journeys. We also offer a family match program. We also have other support groups. And as I mentioned at last month's preliminary budget hearing, funding family support is crucial to providing the support that individuals dealing with mental health issues need, especially our youth. So I want to emphasize as the conversation around youth mental health continues to grow that it's not just focusing on the young people, but focusing on them and those who are supporting them so we can holistically help students. So as we continue this conversation, I really want to make sure that you'll consider NAMI NYC as a partner in the conversation around youth mental health and our work in this space as it expands this year and beyond. As Lynda Lee mentioned, the youth mental health roadmap is something we're really excited to see as a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Davis. Ginger.
Good afternoon and thank yous to Chairs Narcisse, Chair Lee, Joseph, and Schulman for convening this hearing today for initiative zero three four one to collect data on all students with sickle cell disease and sickle cell trait in the public school system. As an adult living with sickle cell disease, I grew up and was educated in New York City public schools. It was very much different. The support that we needed, we had because you didn't have such overcrowding that we have today here in the city. So the needs are greater. And also, you know, the the benefits of this bill is that you get early detection and intervention. So newborn screening collects data on children born in this state with sickle cell disease, children from any other state or anywhere that sickle newborn screening is provided. They are already in the system and receiving comprehensive care. No data is being collected on sickle cell trait. Especially those who have more than forty percent sickling hemoglobin being produced are the ones at risk for having things like fatigue, headaches, joint muscle pains. And they're being told that it's everything except their sickle cell trait. So early intervention for that population is very important. Improving health outcomes by giving access to the different types of care they need. I heard talk about comprehensive care, but then we hear the students saying there's long lines. We can't get to it, or when we do get to it, it's not relevant, it didn't really help me. So having access to quality comprehensive care really starts with provider education. And I want to go back to talk about Bill nine sixty eight that was passed in November that was talking about provider education, public screening, and genetic counseling. We know that hospitals don't really have the capacity to do genetic counseling for the two to three million people with trait in the city and counting, because now we have new people coming in from other countries and other states that may not have had access to healthcare. And so we need to have the provider education so they can better deal with not just chronic illnesses, but the rare diseases, right? Community engagement. We need to have community organizations in this. We are on the ground, we're in the schools, we're in the churches, we're everywhere we need to be. And we're getting the complaints, we're hearing the problems. We can also be part of the solution. We can be part of program design. There should not be any clinics that are being closed. They should be fixed. Why not what the root problem is, fix it and make sure that those those centers can provide the care. And lastly, again, the data the data collection is very important because as you see now in sickle cell disease and other rare diseases, there's a lot of research for novel therapies, both for disease modifying and curative therapies. We can bring that education into the schools, to the students who need it, that there's new medications available that can help you to live healthier. There are clinical trials that are looking at new novel therapies that can help you to live healthier and longer. So we need to have this data collected and shared so that we can give greater access. And when you're talking about closing a program and there's another one a mile away, that's a social determinant to care. Because we do have transportation issues with some families, they can't get to this appointment. And the last thing I want to say is, listening to the questions and answers from Department of Health, from Department of Education, HHC, excuse me, HHS, they speak and then they get up and leave and they don't stay to listen to our testimonies. They're making this sound hunky dory. Oh, we putting this new center here and everybody can go here. But they don't hear to stay to hear the students say, long lines, we're not getting what we need. They're not hearing from centers to say, we don't have enough money to do our programs or when we get funding and it goes away, we can't keep our programs functioning. Those people need to be here through the whole hearing to hear from the community so that when they are making their plans and they're fixing the problems, they're doing it in the way that the community needs.
Thank you.
Hi. I grew up in New York, I'm a resident here. And I wanted to talk about one initiative that I think is very relevant for this conversation about school mental health. Almost all the conversation today has seemed to be about one of two things within mental health. It's been talking about just how big of a problem this is and talking about reactive approaches. So helping people who are already suffering and and that's certainly very important. But I want to highlight an initiative that the mayor put out last year that's actually a proactive approach. And while the New York Post may have joked about it, I've spent the past six years doing full time research in psychology and neuroscience and I have a lot of hopes for it. This is the mayor's mindfulness initiative, which is to have students do two to five minutes of mindfulness every day in the classroom. And it's actually extremely pioneering. There's never been a city at scale testing this until New York City. So I'm a big fan. Unfortunately, I've had a bit of a difficult time getting in touch with people who are involved in the organization of it. And I understand the DOE is massive. And I just didn't really know who else to reach out to exactly. So I thought maybe if I put my voice out there publicly and said that I would love to be in touch with a council member or someone who could help me contribute. And I'm not even asking to like, you know, get paid or anything, just to offer my expert guidance. I have suggestions for reducing the costs and increasing the quality of the program. I just, yeah, it's a little bit frustrating. I think I don't really know where else to go. So I wanted to offer basically my help and say, I think it's really promising. And often in government, there's trade offs between money and, you know, where are you going to put the money or even rights between people? But this is the sort of thing that's like so simple, like two to five minutes every day where kids are learning not only things in school, but also just sort of how to learn as a cognitive development process. And also, at the same time, helping their mental health. Not to mention, there's issues of like being addicted to your smartphone. There's all these things that can be improved, plus teacher retention. So I have a lot of hopes for it. And I just wanted to like say, there's any way I can be put in touch with the people who are behind this, that would be appreciated.
I don't have the answer right now as I'm sitting here, but we definitely hear you and we're gonna work into it before you leave here. I think we have all your information. So if we need extra, we're gonna wait and then we're gonna talk to you and see how the best way we can make it happen and see how we can connect you with somebody that can actually have all the answers that you're looking for. I don't have the answers right now, but I'm sure we'll find a way to see what's going on and see if we can connect you. Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Rachel Evans. I am the Associate Program Director for the School Based Health Program at the Institute for Family Health. We are a private nonprofit federally qualified health center with twenty eight sites in New York City and the Mid Hudson Valley. The institute has been committed to addressing health inequities in our communities since its inception in nineteen eighty three. And in the spirit of that mission, the institute started our school based health program in two thousand and one. And we now operate seven school based health centers, serving students from fifteen New York City public and charter schools. Thank you for inviting me and my colleagues to testify on the importance of school based health centers. Our centers provide essential care to New York City students at no cost to the students or their families. You've heard from many of my colleagues today that school based health centers provide our students with the full scope of primary and preventative services. And school based health centers are really on the front lines of urgent health related needs in our communities. We're all familiar with the pandemic's huge toll on youth mental health around the country. Our full time mental health clinicians remained available, both in person and virtually, to all students in our schools throughout the past four years. They're constantly finding new innovative ways to engage our student populations through stress relief groups, drop in hours, EMDR training, and more. Most of the schools we work with don't have their own mental health clinicians on site, so the service is vitally important to student health now more than ever. Additionally, many of our schools experienced an influx of migrant students over the past two years. Our school based health team partnered with the schools and the Department of Health to reconcile vaccination records and provide catch up vaccination to keep these students safe and in school, at completely no cost to their families. Our team helps families beyond the student enroll in health insurance and receive care within the Institute for Family Health network as well. Our team at a high school in Chelsea has reversed two student overdoses with Narcan during last school year. We worked with the mayor's office after these extremely close calls to expand access to Narcan for all New York City school nurses and school based health centers. We also collaborated with the institute's addiction medicine program and the school administrators to bring overdose prevention strategies to school staff, parents, and students. These services provided by school based health centers are essential for the ongoing well being of our city's youth. However, these centers are often the first programs that are cut during times of financial distress. As you know, we've all come here today to ask that these programs are protected through baseline funding for New York City school based health centers at a rate of a hundred thousand dollars per school campus and a hundred dollars per student enrolled. This funding will protect our health centers and allow us to continue to provide and expand our services and ensure that New York City students are receiving the essential care that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm kind of moved by what you said, like, you know, it's it's unfortunate. The places that need it the most, sometimes the one that lose things the first to go. So we understand the importance of health and more than ever. We and mental health is a big things for us that we have to tackle, we have to keep on tackle that because we can see it, we can see how our young folks working on the street, we can see how they behaving. You don't have a psych, you don't have to be in the field of psychologists, psychiatrists, or even nurses or whatever, a doctor, you can actually see that. Any normal person, like we call people that run in the norm, according to the norm, what's the norm? We don't know. But people in general, we have a lot to deal with. And post, I mean, the height of that pandemic, we're still dealing with it. Everyone, there is no such thing as norm anymore. What's norm? When you said norm, what is it? Because we have a lot of things going on when it come to mental. And not everybody receive it the same way. So I thank you. And having those clinics within the school building, I think is the best approach. I had it part of my plan that I'd be way before I was thinking I was gonna be a council member. I was looking at how we can approach our young folks early on to, especially, we know some community, people really don't go to the doctors and do preventive care. It can be different obstacle on the way, it can be the lack of the knowledge, it can be access, it can be transportation, people who have tendency, if I'm going to work, what's the priority? And it is unfortunate that we're learning it now. And I truly believe that we, as a city, will keep on moving and try to do the best we can. And I hear you. And some of the question, Ginger Davis, if you have some of them for the admin to. And some of the question, Ginger Davis, if you have some of them for the admin to answer, like they're not here, they're already gone. But if you feel like they're specific, that you feel like that we can cooperate, you know, you talk to my chief of staff, send them over, we'll do our very best to get the answer for you. I know when they close it, the mile, like one mile can be in a lot for somebody else to go. Because in my district, I don't even have, you know, those healthcare centers I have in the school base, thank God. But yes, so whatever, I see you took the mic.
Yeah, I know, it's not that, you know, having questions, that's the easy part. The part, the hard part is the planning, the design of things, and the sustainability. And so, you know, funding was mentioned and you brought that up, you know, how are these testing for inches from, from 968? You have to have money for the testing, right? The test needs to be the electrohemoglobin electrophoresis. It happens to be the most expensive test, but it is the most definitive. Because you have rare traits that will not be picked up by the sickle deck or the sickle prep. Health and hospital has to do that of course, right? Are students going to the hospitals to get tested? Or can they make phlebotomists available to come into the school-based clinics to do it, right? So that means that's a salary for the phlebotomist. And where's the funding? Because unlike state legislature, city council bills and initiatives don't particularly mention or ask for funding in there. But funding is needed to get these things implemented. So collaborating, for instance, with community-based organizations, many of whom know where to go find the funding. We could be instrumental in getting funding. We can adopt schools, we can adopt the district or whatever it is that needs to happen to make sure that these programs are getting funded and that we can participate in doing what we do best to make sure that the students and their families, and it's not just, you know, when you talk about mindfulness, he's right about that. It is a good preventative tool. We do that with our community-based health workers, I mean, our community health workers, because of what they're addressing. They can experience anxiety and depression. And so we teach them mindfulness that they practice every day so that they don't. And if they're getting to a point where they feel overwhelmed, they talk to one of their supervisors and/or we refer them to mental health services in the same way we do our clients, right? This is what the community organizations can do. We need to be included because we can come up with these ideas and we can help with the funding and make sure that programs are not closing, that services are not being missed. We also have the cultural competency. We're multilingual organizations. When you look at most literature, it's always in English, it is not always in other languages. And this is where we can be of assistance to the council and to other health, you know, government agencies here in this city and in the state.
I know I access you all the time. So yes, we recognize that, we acknowledge the work that you're doing. Because without you moving the city, CBOs are very, very important in our city. And the work you do is admirable. And I think, I thank God, New York City, because of you, because everyone else that doing the work, that is making it possible for us to be, I'm not saying, some people say the greatest city in the world, but we're still working toward it. The greatest doesn't mean you stop, we still have to be improved. And to stay as the greatest city, we still have works, I mean, a lot of works to do. Work is always ahead. So I want to say thank you to all of you, thank you. And then as far as your information, give us a minute, you can give it to the Sergeant at Arms. We have some rules here. So, or I can wait for me, I'll come around. But I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And we're gonna look into everything you tell us. And as far as I'm gonna tell you, one of the healthcare centers that I visited within the school, they checked for sickle cell disease. So I was very proud of that. They said they acknowledged that some of the folks are coming in. They might be never seen a doctor to do the test. But one of the good news I had, some of the folks already knew they were sickle cell, they had sickle cell disease. And some of them knew they had the trait, they said some of them. But they find a few that didn't, were not aware. So they did the testing based on the symptoms they were experiencing. So they did.
And follow up with counseling for them to understand what that means. Does it, you know, and do it elementary, do it middle school, do it high school, you know? Because if they're getting, you know, getting busy, they don't understand that if you meet somebody with this trait, you can possibly have a child with the disease.
That's right.
And we are trying, just like Tay-Sachs, to eliminate and eradicate this disease through the education. So the testing is very important, but the education has to also go with that.
I agree with you, that's why we passed the bill, education is part of it. One of the things, like you said, the trait with the trait that is prone to every child that you have gonna have 25% for the disease, that's not good either. So you don't want the trait to meet with the trait. And when people in love, it's hard to stop them. So once you know your status early, then you can prevent.
Be responsible.
So be responsible. So thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, yeah. And, what's his name again? Sergeant, can you take the information for me since I have to keep on moving or unless he want to wait? All right. We will now hear from, oh, we're gonna call from the Zoom. Is Yadera Navarro? I'm trying to get my accent going. Christine.
Yeah, and then she'll be followed by.
Yeah, okay. Okay, you'll be followed by Christine Short and Wanda Braxton.
You may begin.
Hello, my name is Yadera Navarro, Director of Community and Stakeholder Relations for New York Blood Center. Thank you to committee chairs Lee, Joseph Narcisse, Shulman, the committees, and the entire council for your continuous support of our organization, the community blood supply, and improving healthcare for all New York City residents. We appreciate the opportunity to share testimony in support of Bill 341, an important legislation towards increased data collection for our sickle cell disease community. New York Blood Center is proud to serve the community with the highest quality blood and stem cell products over the last 60 years. We have a world-renowned research institute known for its novel and innovative research, positively impacting public health through the development of products, technologies, and services with a humanitarian impact. And we're home to the largest rare blood inventory serving patients worldwide located here in Long Island City, Queens. As a leader in sickle cell disease research, we are fortunate to partner with local sickle cell disease awareness organizations, as well as several sickle cell disease warriors such as Shatira Weaver, who will also provide supportive testimony. Our partner organizations, our warrior friends, and our researchers have all highlighted the need for increased data collection in the fight against sickle cell disease to determine the best treatment options and services needed for these patients. Blood product transfusions remain a critical treatment option for sickle cell patients, with as many as 90% receiving at least one transfusion by the age of 20. Diverse blood donations further support their treatment. And it's important to note that one in three African-American blood donors is a match to a sickle cell patient. We are fully committed to collecting and providing precise match units for all in need of them. Therefore, genetic diversity in our blood supply is crucial. The lack of national data for the sickle cell community contributes to inequities within the healthcare system and limits the ability to serve the full needs of these patients. We at New York Blood Center have a long tradition of supporting national data collection efforts and are currently participating in the All of Us Research Program with the NIH, which aims to build one of the most diverse healthcare.
Thank you for your testimony, your time has expired.
I'm almost, I'm so sorry. To support disease treatment and prevention across the country, any and all efforts to prevent, to provide increased data on the number of sickle cell patients and the frequency of their medical episodes will only help patients in need. New York Blood Center fully supports this bill and we hope to better understand the volume of students affected by the disease to improve patient care. Thank you so much, we're committed partners in bringing positive change to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Short.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, my name is Christine Shook. I'm the Associate Executive Director of United Community Schools at the United Federation of Teachers. I am speaking on behalf of Karen Alfred, the Vice President for Elementary Schools at the UFT, and on behalf of the union's more than 190,000 members. I want to thank the committee members and chairs, Joseph Shulman, Narcisse, and Lee for hosting today's oversight hearing on school-based health centers and school-based mental health clinics. We thank you for this opportunity, discuss the impactful work being done in our centers as well as in areas in which we require increased support. United Community Schools is a teacher-inspired nonprofit improving outcomes for close to 20,000 families. At 39 community schools, it operates across New York City and Albany, New York. The community school model is built on the truth that students cannot reach their full potential until their fundamental needs are met. That's why UCS enhances public schools by uncovering the educational, emotional, social, and the health issues that stand in the way of learning and addressing them through strategic community partnerships. By providing essential services such as free eye care and glasses, dental services, nutrition, social, emotional learning, and mental and physical health services, our UCS teams are building stronger schools and communities every day. The school-based health centers within United Community Schools are a vital component of our effort to remove barriers to learning. UCS currently has nine centers within schools throughout the five boroughs, some of which are open while others are in the beginning stages of opening up as well. Our centers serve all students regardless of their insurance and immigration status. Last school year, our school-based health centers and other health services provided over 18,000 mental health and wellness visits, over 16,000 health and dental visits, and performed over 5,000 vision exams.
Thank you for your testimony, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Can you just give a conclusion? As you.
Sure. Let me just scroll to the bottom of here. And, you know, I think in the United Federation of Teachers takes immense pride in our ability to provide services to our students and our members as well. And we just want to thank you for holding this hearing. And we offer ongoing guidance to you to strive to support school-based health centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Wanda Braxton, followed by Shatira Weaver.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, my name is Rhonda Braxton and I'm the Vice President for Health and Wellness at Children's Aid. I would like to thank the committee chairs and the members of the New York City Council's various committees for the opportunity to submit testimony on school-based health centers, or SBHCs. Children's Aid believes that one of the most effective ways to keep kids healthy is by making high-quality physical, mental, and dental healthcare accessible, which includes building health services into their schools. School-based health centers provide high-quality, low-cost healthcare and serve all patients regardless of insurance or immigration status. Children's Aid operates six SBHCs that provide an array of medical, dental, and behavioral health services. Of these, four operate onsite Article 31 mental health clinics. All are located in low-income neighborhoods where access to healthcare can be ever-present roadblocks for families. In fiscal year 2023, our school-based health centers serve nearly 5,500 students and saw upwards of 13,500 medical visits in addition of 4,000 behavioral health visits. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, our health centers played a pivotal role in providing testing, mental healthcare, and ultimately vaccines, once they became available. Nevertheless, our youth are experiencing a mental health crisis that is unprecedented in scale and magnitude. At present, all of our school-based health centers are seeing an influx of newcomer students with varying healthcare needs and little to no resources. At one of our sites, we assisted four asylum seekers diagnosed with sickle cell disease. We connected them to hematologists, administered requisite vaccines, and provided prophylactic penicillin from our own supply to avoid life-threatening infections. Despite the importance of the services offered, insurance only covers about 50% of operations as SBHCs never turn patients away regardless of insurance status. A combination of cuts at the state level.
Thank you for your testimony, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Next is Shatira Weaver, Diana Perez, followed by Diana Perez.
You may begin.
Shatira. Diana Perez, followed by Maria Youssef.
Good afternoon, my name is Diana Perez. I'm a nurse practitioner and I work at the Family Health Centers at NYU, the School-Based Health Program. It's great to see you again, Chair Narcisse, also Chair Lee, Shulman, Joseph, and members of the council. Thank you for holding this very important meeting on school-based health centers and school-based mental health clinics. At the FHC, Family Health Centers at NYU Langone, we firmly believe that quality healthcare must be accessible to be effective. That's why the School-Based Health Program at Family Health Centers operates a network of school-based health clinics dedicated to providing top-notch medical and behavioral healthcare directly to children and adolescents through clinics located in the schools and then in the elementary, middle, and high schools throughout New York City. Our school program offers a comprehensive range of medical, behavioral, health, dental, and vision services to students regardless of ability to pay or immigration status. With services in 55 schools and three more opening this summer, the School Health Program ensures that children receive the care that they need conveniently right in their own school environments. By providing preventative care to keep kids healthy and prompt medical attention when illness strikes, we aim to minimize school absences and parental workdays lost. In fiscal year 2023, the School Health Program saw approximately 15,600 students and completed 82,600 clinical visits across all of our service lines. And those were, 15,600 were unique visits. It's important to note that we're not alone in our mission. Within our program, 21 of our sites are represented by the New York City Chapter of the New York School-Based Health Alliance, and which serves students across the five boroughs, including more than 22,516 in temporary housing and approximately 5,000 children and newly migrated families. Research demonstrates that school-based health clinics have a positive impact on health equity, school attendance, and reducing healthcare costs. Their presence alone increases students' willingness to seek medical services, especially for students reporting depression and past suicide attempts and those seeking information on pregnancy prevention.
Thank you for your testimony, your time has expired.
Followed by Maria Youssef. Mariana, sorry, Mariana Youssef.
No problem. Hi. Good afternoon, I'm Mariana Youssef. I'm Northside Center's Assistant Director for the Clinic and Schools Program, which has oversight of 16 satellite mental health clinic locations in New York City Public Schools and Charter Schools. Our staffing includes licensed social workers and licensed mental health counselors, psychiatrists and psychiatric nurse practitioners who provide wraparound mental health services to the children and caregivers of the school's population, as well as support school staff and administration around managing crises and providing general psychoeducation as it pertains to youth mental health. A 2023 study in the annals of pediatric and child health said in the United States, the youth suicide has become the second-leading cause of premature death among those aged 10 to 24 years and is the leading cause of death among those aged 13 to 14 years. School-based mental health clinics are uniquely and ideally suited to stem this crisis because instead of having parents call dozens of in-network providers who supposedly take new patients and find none, therapy is readily available for at-risk children. School officials often bring in school clinical managers to resolve crises. Thus, students in emotional crisis have better, faster access to clinical help. Youth are sometimes more easily engaged in their school environment. Having school clinical managers in the children's schools gives those managers a better understanding of the school's environment and allows for a more holistic approach to services, including understanding how children interact with staff and their peers and collaborating with guidance counselors, social workers, teachers, et cetera. To approve the efficacy of these programs, Northside offers these recommendations. The city could provide public service announcements promoting students' use of school-based mental health clinics as an effective stigma-free way to help at-risk students and other troubled students get the help they need. To be trusted and effective, school clinical managers.
Thank you for your testimony, your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
The next is Niamh Morgan, followed by Alia Enzare.
You may begin.
Hi. So my name is Niamh Morgan. I am a liberation program facilitator with the Brotherhood Sisters Soul, or BROCSIS, for 25 years. BROCSIS has been at the forefront of social justice, educating, organizing, and training to challenge inequity and champion opportunity for all with a focus on Black and Latinx youth. BROCSIS is where young people claim the power of their history, identity, and community to build the future they want to see. BROCSIS provides around-the-clock service and wraparound programming, making space for Black and Latinx young people to examine their roots and define their stories and awaken their legacy. I personally am part of the liberation program, which supports young people's organizing skills, their growth, their agency, and teaching them about systemic oppression. And I am. And I am here today to, again, in support of school mental health centers. We have three full-time social workers on staff, and it is quite apparent that, um, as much as we try to provide wraparound services to our young folks, the, the, their needs are not being met in schools. We do the best that we can, but there still needs more, there still needs more folks there, uh, even though we have young people, even with school-based health centers, such as from Thurgood Marshall Academy, TMA, and CHA, Community Health Academy, Community, Community Health Academy of the Heights. In addition, I won't repeat what all the other experts have said. I will share my, my own story quickly, um, and as to why youth mental health centers are so important. I've been a youth organizer for several years now, and in December, I talked to a young person who, when they went to a social worker in regards to a mental health crisis, they were put, uh, in a mental health institution rather than actually spoken to at length about their problem and what they were dealing with. I am someone who was also in such a similar, somewhat similar situation. I went to a hospital for help.
Thank you for your testimony, your time has expired.
Can you, yes, you, your story, what's the story? Continue.
I ended up being, I went there on the advice of my therapist to get, um, to get medication. I had been living with depression since I was thirteen years old. I, it was unaddressed as a child. Um, I got help when I was twenty years old. And it's, and now I, I live with chronic depression as a condition that I will need treatment for for the rest of my life because I wasn't able to get early intervention. When I went to that hospital, and I was nearly institutionalized, that very, that particular experience was so traumatic for me that I am afraid to go to hospitals generally and seek healthcare as a whole. I'm, I have been able to go on and do more things. I have a master's degree, I have a juris doctor, but that experience stuck with me, and I personally cannot imagine what the impact would be on a young person for going to someone that they were supposed to trust, and then being put in a situation where they were felt, they felt completely powerless. They had their agency completely stripped away from them just because they wanted help. So, uh, here to support school mental health clinics.
Thank you for sharing your own story, your personal story. Thank you. Next is Alia Enzari.
You may begin.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, my name is Alia Enzari, and I'm the Teen Health Strategist for the New York Civil Liberties Union. Um, I want to thank you for allowing me to testify today, and I would like to use this opportunity to provide the council with information on the importance of school-based health centers. I'm in my current role as the Teen Health Strategist at the NYCLU. I've encountered firsthand the critical importance of ensuring young people have access to confidential health services. Um, I train providers on minors' rights to confidential healthcare. Understanding these rights enables healthcare professionals to establish trust with young patients, fostering open communication and facilitating early intervention when necessary. In my former role as a health educator, I've witnessed the transformative impact of comprehensive sex education in schools, where students are empowered with the knowledge and agency over their bodies and health choices. Um, these experiences have unequivocally underscored the indispensable role of school-based health centers in providing a safe and supportive environment for adolescents to seek essential healthcare services. Um, SBHCs serve as a cornerstone in bridging the gap between healthcare and education, offering a confidential space where minors can access vital resources and support without fear of judgment or disclosure. Uh, school-based health centers play a pivotal role in nurturing a supportive, inclusive school climate. Uh, students are more likely to thrive academically and socially when they feel physically and emotionally supported. And SBHCs serve as pillars of the support. The NIKLU urges, uh, the council to, uh, consider increased funding to create more SBHCs in New York City. By expanding the availability of school-based health centers, we can ensure that all students, regardless of their socioeconomic background, have access to quality healthcare services in the familiar and accessible setting of their schools. Additional funding for school-based health centers and targeted placement strategies represents proactive investments in the well-being of our youth and the overall health equity of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is Lauren Jen, followed by Rochelle Wilson.
May begin.
Thank you so much, my name is Dr. Lauren Jen. I'm a New York City pediatrician. I'm chair-elect of the American Academy of Pediatrics National Section on Early Career Physicians, and today I speak on behalf of the American Academy of Pediatrics, New York District Chapters Two and Three, whose thirty-five hundred physician members provide health and mental healthcare to millions of children and teens living in and around New York City. Thank you so much for the opportunity to submit testimony today. I speak today representing community pediatricians and the AAP. New York pediatricians appreciate and support SBHCs in New York City schools because they are effective, deliver quality care that is accessible and convenient for children and families, and provide a necessary extension to the pediatric medical home. SBHCs keep children in school and parents at work. They improve academic outcomes and school connectiveness. We know that missing work and finding transportation can be devastating for families with limited resources. We are relieved when we learn a child has a trusted SBHC where they can go to relief care. This is especially important for the ninety percent of schools with SBHCs serving the most disenfranchised New York City neighborhoods. SBHCs are regulated and trained by the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. They communicate with, together with PCPs. Mental healthcare now comprises about twenty-five percent of visits to our offices. When I identify and begin to care for a child with behavioral health concerns, how fortunate and beneficial for the child and family if I can easily call this child's SBHC and get them into care with a counselor quickly. When I initiate or change asthma management, I can communicate that to an SBHC partner for optimal management. New York AAP Chapters Two and Three need SBHCs for the children and families we serve. We ask that the New York City Council continue to fund these critical and safety net adjuncts to the care we provide, and we propose that the city council consider an alternative funding methodology to keep SBHCs sustainable. We propose a baseline funding model of a hundred thousand dollars per school campus, plus one hundred dollars per student enrolled in the school. The American Academy of Pediatrics recognizes that children cannot learn if they are not healthy, not present to receive instruction, and not connected to the school. SBHC providers and community pediatricians can bring together the health and education sponsors with a common goal of better outcomes for children. As New York City pediatricians, we thank the New York City Council for your action in helping children and families to grow and thrive. We are ready to partner in this exciting and essential work. New York AAP is ready and willing to partner in helping New York City efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Doctor Jen. Um, the next is Rochelle Wilson, followed by Dawn Yuster.
You may begin.
No. Dawn? Hello?
Hi, yes. Oh, are we ready for me to begin?
Yes.
Thank you, great. Good evening, thank you chairpersons, um, for the opportunity to testify and for this hearing. The Legal Aid Society is deeply concerned about the threat of decreased funding for social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health services in public education, and the devastating implication of those cuts on our clients, particularly given the continuing mental health crisis for our children and youth. The Legal Aid Society engages in educational advocacy for our clients in the areas of school-based mental health, restorative justice practices, school discipline, special education, and school placement and programming. And we repeatedly hear from our clients, um, that they sought out social workers, mental health supports in schools when they needed support, but none was available. With nowhere to turn for support, students lacking the tools to cope cannot learn effectively at all. And what we end up seeing is that students are unable to get their needs met in schools, and instead, young people end up receiving mental healthcare in emergency rooms, hospitals, foster care, and juvenile justice facilities, rather than from mental health services. We know there's clear data that school-based mental health services work. We also know that they reduce racial disparities. The city launched a mental health continuum to address not only the need for, uh, school-based mental health clinics, but also a continuum of services to teach students the skills that they need socially, as well as give them access to clinically-trained school, like, social workers as well as psychiatrists, and get other critical care and acute care as needed. The city created an innovative model called the Mental Health Continuum, which is the first cross-ever, cross-agency partnership ever between the New York City Public Schools.
Thank you for your testimony, your time has expired.
And if I could just finish, uh, two more sentences, the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. And we, um, we urge the city, um, to join the council in, uh, in extending and baselining five million dollars in funding for the Mental Health Continuum, extending funding for school-based mental health clinics, extending funding for the four hundred fifty social workers for sixty-seven million dollars, and also continuing and expanding funding for restorative justice programs in the amount of, at the minimum, twenty-two million dollars. Thank you so much, and my written testimony provides much more extensive information. I appreciate the opportunity to testify and be here with you today. And just to let you know, we are hearing great things about the school-based mental, the school mental health continuum model, and that there, every month, there are doubling, there's a doubling of the number of students that are getting referrals and access to care, and only three clinics of the five have already opened. So there's so much more to happen with the two clinics that will be opening up soon.
Thank you. The next is Derry Oliver, followed by Salma Bachsin. I mean, no, Bach, sorry.
You may begin.
Salma? Bach? Salma? Yeah, okay. Followed by Camilla Sosa. Camilla Sosa. All right, so now I'm gonna recall all the names that I had called before that was not online. Joanna Von Mari. Erin Larson. Shatira Weaver. Rochelle Wilson. Derry Oliver. Salma Bach. And Camilla Sosa. If you're online, please. No? All right, so if anyone, if anyone have registered to testify and have not yet been called, please raise your hand in the chamber or on the Zoom. Seeing no hands, I would like to note that everyone can submit written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within seventy-two hours of this hearing. To conclude, I would like to thank all of my staff, the students, of course, and they were very interesting here, and interested advocates who attended today's hearing, and everyone who runs the health and mental health centers and provides care for our city's youth. Thank you all so much for the work you do. With that, before I conclude, I would like to say thank you to all the team that make it possible. First, I have to say Committee on Hospital Staff. Rhea Oganzara, Legislative Council. Manu Butt, Legislative Policy Analyst. Melissa Nunes, Senior Data Scientist. James Hu, Data Scientist. Reece Highrota, Data Scientist. Danielle Glantz, Financial Analyst. Florentine Cabaro, Finance Unit Head. Committee on Education Staff. Nadia Jean-Baptiste, Legislative Council. Jen Atwell, Senior Policy Analyst. Chlore Rivera, Senior Policy Analyst. Monica Soliday, Principal Financial Analyst. Andrew Len Lawless, Legislative Financial Aid Analyst. Committee on Health Staff. Christopher Pepe, Senior Legislative Council. Sarah Suter, Legislative Council. Manu Butt, Legislative Policy Analyst. Melissa Nunes, Senior Data Scientist. James Hu, Data Scientist. Reece Highrota, Data Scientist. Danielle Glantz, Financial Analyst. Committee on Mental Health and Disabilities and Addiction Staff. Sarah Suker, Legislative Council. Kristi Dueller, Sen, Senior Legislative Policy Analyst. Rose Martinez, Assistant Deputy Director of Data. And Danielle Glantz, Financial Analyst. And to all of you that came to Make It Possible, thank you to my staff. Sai Joseph, Chief, my Chief of Staff, Deputy Frank Shea, my scheduler, and everyone in my office. I want to say thank you to Make It Possible, Irina, thank you. All the people in my office, all the volunteers, everyone that make our job easier, and to all of you that took your time to be here, and the sergeant arms, you're awesome, thank you so much. And we are done.